Dr. Hardner, Ben Whackerman wanted to wave hi. He's over for dinner.
Hey, Ben, how are you, sir? Will you be our college board rep?
Yeah.
No, I'm good. How are you?
Good to see you, sir. Good to see all the good things out there. Your, where was your summer internship?
Well, I was supposed to be in Philadelphia this summer, but it was, it ended up being virtual. I was supposed to be at Campbell's headquarters.
That's great. That is great. How do you like college?
It's good, but well, we'll see how this semester goes, because.
Well, this is the big board question. Do you feel prepared?
Yes, I do.
And don't forget, he's at the Honors College. At Penn State.
Awesome. Strayer's.
I mean, he's at Strayer, so that's more impressive, right?
Well, he, Ben, you were a board, board rep, how many times?
I was a board rep my senior year. I think that's.
I don't remember.
About four years ago.
Yeah, three, three, I think it's three years now, which is crazy.
It is crazy. Well, we'll wait until you get a little bit older and it's going to go a lot faster.
Yeah, I'm sure.
It's all percentages. When you're two, it's like, you know, half your lifetime.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. The percentage gets smaller every year.
It goes faster, the older you get, has been my experience.
Theory of relative.
By the time I'm 80, it's going to really go fast. If I make it to 80, yeah. Anyway, this is our virtual board.
She was removed again, Joe.
I just, I just promoted her and she disappeared, so.
Oh, yes, Kailin, would you, I think, Joe, just let's start and then we'll try to get her in there. Because you still have a lot of, you have interviews to do and all that, so we still have 10 minutes to get her in.
If you can, Dr. Hardner, just let her know, just rejoin as an attendee, and I don't know what happened. I went to promote her and she disappeared, so.
Rejoin as an attendee, how?
Just the same way she just did. I'm not sure how she got knocked off, so.
Do you let everybody else in? Yes, they're in.
All right, should I call the meeting to order?
See.
All right, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Thank you, everyone who is joining us for this night's board meeting. And we're going to go ahead and start off with our flag salute. Joe, if you want to get that up for us. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and the visible with liberty and justice for all. All right, Anita, would you go ahead and do the roll call?
Mr. Kern.
Here.
Mr. Akmanowits.
Present.
Mr. Akmanowits.
I'm present.
Ms. Weed.
Present.
Mr. McCucci.
Here.
Mr. Reimers.
Here.
Mr. Spear.
Here.
And Mrs. Mitchell.
Here. All right, our announcements, just that the meeting is going to be recorded by the board secretary. Next on the agenda here is the motion to accept the resignations of Dwight Anderson and Ronald Jackson dated 7/31/2020. So I'll need a motion for that.
Go moved. I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Mitch.
I second that.
So the next thing that we're going to move on to here in our meeting is we have two board members, two board seats rather, that are going to need to be filled. And the procedure for this is that we take applications, which we do have applications for those seats. And I will, I'll read them out, and what we're going to do is just spend a few minutes with each of the candidates that were available. I don't know if we have them all available this evening. Anita, do you happen to know?
I received confirmation from all but one, and you'll see in the executive summary, the individual who did not respond, they would be in attendance.
Okay. So for the Region One seat, we have Mr. Gary Vetrow, Mr. Ronald Jackson, Mr. Michael Solinsky. And then for Region Three, we have Mr. Stephen Klein, Mr. Joseph Lyons, and Ms. Jennifer Mackowitz, if I apologize if I happen to say that wrong. So Anita, I know that we have some procedures here. Do we want to go ahead and?
Do you like me to read them out?
Please.
Each candidate will have five minutes to summarize his or her background. The board will have an opportunity to ask one or two questions of each candidate. That's not each board member having the opportunity to ask one or two questions. That's the board in general having the opportunity to ask one or two questions of each candidate. Then the nominations will be made by the board to fill the vacant seat. In order to fill the seat, a motion must be made by a board member, seconded by another board member, and voted on by the majority of the board. The candidates will be voted upon in the order in which they were nominated. The majority of seated members of the board must vote to appoint a given candidate. Once a candidate receives a majority vote, he or she will be given the oath of office by Judge Guyer, and the new board member will immediately take their seat on the board.
The only slight adjustment, Anita, and I apologize for not getting with you on this ahead of time, is instead of doing them in the order they are received, I feel like the better way to do this is going to be for us to, to vote on the three different candidates. And whichever candidate that you feel is going to get your vote, I guess, it, we will go ahead and start that way. And then if we don't get the adequate amount of votes, we'll then try to make it down to two people, whoever had the most votes, and so on. Does that make sense to everyone?
What exactly is the majority of the board members present or still seated?
Per Mr. Garten, it would be five.
So the idea behind us not doing it one at a time, I feel, is because I think it gives people an advantage, and it's a strange way of doing it. So there's three different candidates in each region. Each one of them will have an opportunity to tell you a little bit about themselves, and you'll have an opportunity to ask a question about them. They've also submitted applications, so after going through each of the three candidates, allowing them time to tell them, tell us a little bit about themselves. Out of the three candidates, when it's your turn to vote, you will say the name of the person that you would like to vote for. So if.
Can I ask a clarified question? Anita, you said majority of the board was five?
Yes, that's according to Mr. Garten.
Even if we have seven people?
What he said actually was, and I looked back at his email. For the first vote, we would have to do, we would, we would need a four, a majority of four. If we immediately sign in, excuse me, swear in the person afterwards, then we would need a majority of five.
That makes sense with currently seven seated members, the majority is four. When you have eight seated members, the majority would be five.
So could, could we just vote on both and have both sworn in then with, just with having to reach the majority of four? Then, as well?
We probably could. I mean, it, it, it just is a matter of a formality of if we have someone signed in. I keep saying.
Well, we'd have to do separate swear-ins then, you know?
Yes.
Well, you would.
We have to, anyway.
And are we going to be voting for the one member that is not present tonight? That's in the executive content at the bottom there?
My understanding is they need to be present to be interviewed.
So we're down to five instead of six candidates, then?
Can we say which member is it that we don't have in attendance?
It's Mr. Smo, and I'm going to, excuse me. Smolinski.
Okay. All right, does everybody, does it make sense to everybody? Any other questions on how we proceed?
I think that makes sense.
Okay. All right, so at this time, we can invite Mr. Vetrow into our interview.
He should be popping up momentarily. He is in. Gary, you are in the meeting, you're muted, and your camera is off, but you are in as a panelist right now.
All right, Gary, if you want to unmute.
There we go.
Good evening, how are you?
Good.
Thanks so much for joining us, and thanks for going, being willing to put yourself into the lion's den of what is now a very difficult process of being a school board member during a pandemic, so I applaud you alone for, for that. So we've had an opportunity to look at your application, but why don't you just spend a few minutes telling the board and the community a little bit about yourself and why it is you feel like you would be the best fit for this position?
I have worked for 20 years in state government in New Jersey. And as part of that, I've had to work with multiple other states, and I've had to work a lot with the federal government. The majority of my career has been in engineering, but the last few have been in the financial end. And I've had to work with, you know, federal projects, and I've learned a lot about federal funds, where they come from, how they're allocated, what is required, and to open and allocate and close projects on the federal level. And the thing that's most relevant is outside of work, when I found out my father had dementia, and my son was diagnosed in the autism spectrum disorder, I've spent the last 14 years learning as much as I could about neuroscience and cognitive developments, and trying to work with all of my son's doctors, therapists, as well as the, all the schools he's been in in the Quakertown district, and working a lot with them, and what is and isn't allowable, and going through all the changes that happened as the administration changed. And it was actually my wife that suggested that, that I apply for this, because she thought all of that was something that the board could use. And I'm not one to tell my wife she's wrong.
Smart man. I'm just kidding.
But I, I just think that with all of the experience I have working on the state and federal level in terms of movement of money and applications of money, and seeing where, where waste is, and where things have improved over the years, and where they've gotten a little bit worse, that I can come in and find, or help to find areas to make things a little bit more efficient, and find places where maybe there's unlikely areas where we could get a little bit of extra income. For example, I had tried to get information to help with the planetarium to turn that into a moneymaker before I had found out that it had been sold. Unfortunately, I was a little bit late with that, but that's just an example. I had gone, been invited to NASA to attend a conference on, on, on the asteroid initiative that NASA put out several years ago. And I had come back with three links of free information that are set up for, for planetarians. But unfortunately, I didn't get that until about a week after they had sold it. So, but I just, I, I'm confident that with all of my experience and that I could come in and, you know, help as the best I can and try to make things better for everybody, including my own son, who's still in the district.
Thank you so much for sharing. I will open it up to any board members that want to ask questions.
I'll ask a question. Hi, Mr. Vetrow, this is Keith McCucci. So what have, what have you done to sort of prepare yourself for this position with inside the understanding how, how school directors are positioned, what we're supposed to do? Have you done any preparation work? And so can you go, let us know?
So I've been to a few of the school board meetings. I have been to a lot of meetings, not so much on generals, in the general meetings, but I've been through a lot of meetings with, with teachers and administrative staff on the special needs and because of, you know, my son's IEP meetings. And I've been to town, the planning board meetings, and, but as far as this particular position, I only know what I've seen from the few meetings that I have been in attendance with, but everything that I've done in my career, every position I've been in, I've thrown, been thrown into with no experience at all, and I've always managed to learn very quickly, because I'm willing to admit what I don't know, and I'm willing to learn. So I don't see any problems coming in and picking up and getting up to speed quickly. I don't, I don't see myself causing any delay in any of the work that you guys need to do because of inexperience. That's one thing I'm used to doing in the last 20 years, is picking up, picking up the ball and running with it and learning what I have to as quickly as I can.
Yeah, no, great. Thanks much. I appreciate it.
I have a question. Why are you interested in throwing yourself into this mess?
Right?
During COVID, yeah.
I was very serious. I was very serious when I said it was my wife's idea. I had wanted to, I had talked to her about possibly trying to go for the school board years ago. And at the time, we were in disagreement about it, and I was going through a lot of things and a lot of changes at work, and I, I never applied. And when she saw the openings, she came to me and, and told me that, about the openings, and said, I think you would be perfect for this position. And I respect her, and I respect her judgment. If she, if she thinks I'm good for something, then I believe her, and I believe that, you know, I should do it. She wouldn't come to me and ask me to be involved in this. If she didn't believe wholeheartedly that I was right for the position.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one question then for you, too.
Sure.
Um. Now, this would be solely based on, on your opinion and what you've gathered from outside news sources, or even what you've seen from past school board meetings, or information that the district has shared with, with parents, but, and, and I wouldn't hold you to this if, if we did vote you onto the board as well, but how do you feel about schools reopening now in the midst of this pandemic? You know, understanding that if, once you came onto the board, you would be given some more information that could possibly change your mind. I just wanted to know how your feelings are at this point.
I'm very much of two minds about it, and that's because the situation is such an odd one. All the places that have reopened so far are now shutting down again, because there are a lot of people who just do not follow the rules and do not follow the protocols. And every place that has already reopened is shutting back down because the cases are skyrocketing. The safest thing would be to wait for vaccines, but that's obviously not good for the children and their, and the education. But ultimately, I would love to see as many of the kids go virtual as they can, and then try, try to use that to make more space for the kids who don't learn well in the, in that kind of environment, and give them more space and, you know, hopefully a safer school to go back to. You know, it's kind of hard to say that, because you, but like, my own wife, and I disagree. I want our son to go into school, because I think he learns better in the structured environment. But my wife and him are both high risk. So she's going to be working with him virtually. But, you know, so I think if we can maximize the amount of virtual school attendees, that'll make things easier to be, to make the school safer for everyone else. And, you know, the smartest thing to do is to not to make a decision until we're sure that we can make a good one. The worst thing any government ever does is make a snap decision, so they can look like they're leading, and end up having to go and reverse themselves because they made the wrong one.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. All right, I'm going to thank you, Mr. Vetrow, so much again for your time and your willingness to, to put yourself out there and you know, be a part of the board, like I said, as a, in a very difficult time. So I will excuse you at this time, and I believe we'll go ahead and bring in our next candidate.
Give me one second to get him back to normal, or do you want to leave him in here?
I think the protocol is that he's excused, and then we bring in the next candidate.
Okay, and the next candidate's name?
I think that's going to be Ron Jackson. Mr. Jackson.
Can you spell that?
Who is this Ron Jackson?
Can you see me?
Hello.
Hello, can everybody see me and hear me?
We can, we can, and thank you, Ron. We were just joking, we're like, who is, who is this Ron Jackson? I'm going to say the same thing to you, though, that I said to the previous gentleman, which is, you know, thank you for applying and being willing to further your position as a school board member in this very chaotic, chaotic time. And we know about you quite a bit, but I would like to give you an opportunity to tell the board your case regarding why you'd be the best person for this position.
I appreciate that. I don't want to just say, well, because, I mean, that's, that's not appropriate, and it's not actually, it's not actually true. One of the things we're faced with is a grave crisis for the school district. And I'm not just a former board member, I'm also a parent. I have two children in the school district. I've been in Quakertown for 14 years. So I have a vast knowledge of the area. I have had children in the school district the entire time. In fact, I've, out of the, I think there's I don't want to say how many schools there are, they keep changing daily, unfortunately. No, I have had children in almost every school in the district, actually, so I find that a, an important thing. You're, you have a lot of candidates up for you to choose tonight. I'm sure they're all qualified people. I wouldn't doubt that I'm better as a person than any of them. I definitely, that'd be a silly statement to make and wholly inaccurate. However, one of the things I do have that they do not have is my experience on the board. I've been on the board since 2014. I was appointed to fill a vacancy. I have successfully been reelected twice. The only reason I stepped down was because I had to due to relocation. You're in a situation right now where you're faced with a lot of information, a lot of decisions, and from a practical standpoint, I think it's best if you were to choose me over one of the other candidates, simply because I am aware of all the issues you face, all the backstory's. I've already been through all of this. And as far as me as a candidate as well, it's not just the school board, it's also the other things that I do that we all do. We are, we're all part of different committees. We're all part of different facets of the community. Mr. Akmanowits is on the tech school, and he does a great job there. Mr. Spear is an excellent member of the facilities committee. Mr. McCucci is seriously in tune with the finances and how we spend our money. And Ms. Weed loves her policy. But I also serve on the IU. I have my own special needs child, and I'm very in tune with what his needs are and what the requirements are for the school district to teach him and every other special needs child. And I'm also on the Quakertown Education Foundation. And I did provide letters of recommendation from those two organizations suggesting that I would be, it, not only am I important, I believe to the school district to maintain a bit of continuity through this. I think I'm important to those two organizations as well, especially the IU is facing the same thing that the district is facing, trying to find a way to get their children back in the classes. So I simply believe that of the other candidates up for your consideration, that I'm the right choice. I'll just put it that way.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Jackson from the board?
Yeah. Hi, Mr. Jackson.
Mr. McCucci, how are you, sir?
I'll ask the same question. I asked the same question. What would you say you've done to prepare yourself to be on the board?
It sounds like a Triton silly answer, but I prepared by being on the board. I, I, I know the ins and outs of the administration very well. I know certainly, certainly what the board members do. We, I mean, you have seven board members sitting right now. And each of you, I hope, can remember back to what you thought when you were first elected or first appointed, as it were. And you walked in here with grand schemes of how you were going to make everything different, and then you realized, wait a second, there's only a certain amount of things you can do. So I already know that. I already, I'm already aware of the limitations that simply exist. And again, I know where we are in this whole process of getting back, getting kids back to school, and what the administration can do or can't do, what the teachers desire to get done and not done, and certainly what the opinion of is the community, based upon all the surveys I've seen. Something I think also the other applicants might not be aware of, so.
Thank you.
So Ron, I'm a little slow, Mr. Jackson. Why are you able to reapply to the board? Is it because it's in a, where you're moving to?
The, if you recall, it's not just me who stepped down, it was also Mitch. And it just so happens that the district I moved into is the one he stepped down from. So I'm, I would be filling Mitch's spot, essentially.
Does that make sense to everyone else?
It does. Thank you.
Any other questions?
That was a good question, so that the public knows.
It's true, very much. Okay, anyone else? Last call. All right, so since we don't have the other gentleman who actually applied, would we just move on to our vote at this time?
If you want to interview, I mean.
Does Joe have to set, Joe, you have, you have to disinvite me, Joe, take me. Does Joe have to set, Joe, you have, you have to disinvite me, Joe, take me out of the meeting.
Yes, we need to, we do need to excuse Mr. Jackson, that's true.
All right, he is not back. He is, just so everybody's aware, he's back to an attendee. He's not removed because he won't be able to get back in.
If you'd like to continue the interviews, that has typically been the process. Um, and then once all the interviews are completed and you have all the information, then you can vote or nominate to vote based on region.
So we would- Yes, we move on with the interviews and then come back, give him that last gentleman an opportunity, extra opportunity to show up.
That's fine with me. All right, so then we will move on to our, uh, to region three. And maybe it might be helpful for us to explain these different regions. So region one consists of Richland Township, Richland Town, Haycock Township. And then the regions, uh, three seat consists of Richland four, Quaker Town Borough. Am I missing anything? Okay, I think I'm correct. All right, so we're going to move on to the region three.
Let me just interject. I just received an email from Mr. Smolinski saying he just got home from work at 7:30. He is interested in attending. Joe, can you send him a link to join? From the email that I sent you?
It would just be the general public link that's posted on the website, and then once we get to him, I can find his name here and move him to a panelist.
Okay, I'll let him know that.
Okay, so we'll still have some time. So we'll, we'll start uh with Mr. Klein if we want to get him in here, and then we'll come back to Mr. Smolinski. Thanks for catching that, Anita.
No problem, I just keep checking.
Mr. Klein, are you with us?
Steven is in the room. He's muted and his camera is off.
Okay, Mr. Klein, if you would like to, if you could just unmute and if you would like to un, to put your video on as well, so we can get started.
Okay, can y'all hear me?
Hey there, stranger.
Hi.
I, uh, I do think you're, you're a bit crazy to come back here and ask for another round of this. You must be a glutton for punishment.
What's your wife saying?
Um, she's, she's being a good trooper and leaving the decision up to me.
Well, we do appreciate it.
Time.
Yes.
Well, we appreciate you being willing to um apply during a very difficult time. And we do know you, we know a lot about you. Tell us a little bit about why you feel you would be the best candidate to fill this position.
Um, I mean, as you all know, I was on the board for five years. I had to leave due to some personal issues, which um many of you know about. Um, I certainly didn't really want to leave. I will say that the, the five years that I spent on the board were wonderful. I met and worked with a lot of terrific people. Both other board members uh through the administration and the teachers. When I heard that there were two vacancies, I began to think, you know, would that be something that I would be willing to do if it would be helpful for the district? And to answer your question, I'm thinking that my experience having been on the board would be potentially helpful uh to come in, given what's going on, to be able to get up to speed as quickly as possible. There's, I'm sure, quite a bit of information that I'm not aware of. And I want to help more than anything else. I really do.
I appreciate that, sir. Any questions from the board members?
Go for it, Keith.
Hey, Steve, how are you?
Great, Keith, how are you?
Good, man. I hope your summer's going well. So uh, what would you say you've done to prepare yourself to come back to the board? Or maybe you can give us a little bit about how you're keeping up with things?
Well, keep in mind, Keith, that this was a fairly recent occurrence. I wasn't thinking about coming back to the board until recently, when I saw that there were two opportunities, but obviously I've, you know, I've monitored the website. I've tried to keep up to speed with what's going on in the community specifically regarding the schools. Like I said earlier, I'm sure there's going to be some time where I'm going to have to catch up. Um, I don't profess to know everything that's going on, and I'm sure there's a lot of information there that I'm not aware of. But I felt that just through what we're all going through, what I've been through with my job and work and whatnot, that hopefully that will, that will lend me some perspective as far as what's going on in the school district.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. And, and by the way, I think it's great that you're calling in from a tropical island.
Keeps me in my happy place for four hours.
Four. Oh, no. All right, any other question? Yes.
I did have one as well. Hi, Mr. Klein.
Hello, Mr. Spear, how are you?
Good. So I, I would ask you the same question that I had asked the previous candidate, well, except for Ron, but um based on what you have heard from, you know, previous news sources or or from the district website, or just from other people around, and based on, basing your opinion solely on what you have there, how do you feel about kids returning to school?
That's a difficult question to answer, but I'll try to give you as, as good an answer as I can. I believe that the kids need to be in school, if at all possible. I think this whole pandemic has really affected the kids more than we even know right now. I think it's hurting them not being in school and not being able to do the normal school activities. Uh, what I would say is, is my opinion would be that providing, that we provide the safest possible environment that those kids could be in. If that's possible, I would like to see the kids back in the school. Now, obviously, there's going to be kids that have underlying issues that would prevent that, at-risk kids, so forth and so on. And obviously, we would need to make accommodations for those types of kids. But if there's no underlying issues, I think we're really getting to the point where we need to get the kids back in school.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, Mr. Klein, thank you very much. We're going to excuse you back to, I guess, an attendee, and then we're going to go ahead and with the next, the next um candidate here.
Who is the next candidate, please?
One second. That's going to be Mr. Joseph Lyons.
Okay, there are two Joe Lyons in here, so we'll try with the first one.
Okay. Joe, if you can hear us, if you would like to go ahead and unmute and turn your video on if you so choose, so we can proceed.
Okay, I think I have my audio. There you go. Start my video. There I am. All right, everything changed. When he said I was in here twice, he did the second one, and it knocked me out of the one that I was actually watching the meeting on, so I apologize for that. I'll give you a little bit of background on who I am. My name is Joe Lyons. I am a member, I've lived in the Quaker Town community now for 16 years. I'm reaching out to the board here to uh fill this position or be uh, have the opportunity to fill the open position you have. Uh, because I want to help you guys and uh make decisions that are good for the entire community and do things that are, that are, that are right for everyone that's, that's involved here. I've, I've been an advocate for public education for years. My background, my professional background is I worked in the newspaper business as a journalist for 10 years. Uh, the majority of what I covered was the public education beat. And um, and then I also worked in, in public schools. I've, uh, I've worked for three different school districts over 10 years in the administration offices, uh, mostly in communications. I also taught for a year at a public school, and um so I have that background as well. When I was um at my last school as a communications director, I spent a lot of time advocating for uh public education, a lot of trips to Harrisburg. I know a lot of people on the education committee. I know a lot of superintendents. Uh, I've worked at districts similar in size to uh Quaker Town, some that are smaller, and quite honestly, the largest school district in the state of Pennsylvania. I worked at the uh School District of Philadelphia for a while. Um, at my roles at the different schools, I've been a cabinet level uh position at, at some of them, where I've, I've, I've done hiring, I've done budgeting, I have developed communications plans. Um, I've worked with state and local officials, and um I've, I've, I've built community. And I think that's really a, a big part of the responsibility of the, of the board is to be a um a positive member of the community as well as serving the, the school district and everyone uh out beyond. I'm, uh, I have twin boys who are uh entering fifth grade at Trump Bowersville, so um Mr. Schmucker earlier on, online, good to see you guys. And um I'm actually at my third uh building uh without having moved. And uh we started full-day kindergarten at QE. Uh, great program there. Uh, my boys responded very well there, and then uh we were at Toheken before that closed with Dr. Bradley. I saw her as well. Hi, Dr. Bradley. And um, and now we're at Trump Bowersville. We've been there for two years. I, I have the greatest respect uh for the school district and the people here. And um I will, will trumpet the uh, the abilities of the staff and, and, and also as a good uh brand evangelist, as I've been told in the past, I'm not afraid to tell them when things aren't going right as well. And that's really uh what you need is you can't just be a yes man. You can't just be saying everything is great and rosy and ignore things when there's little bumps in the road and making sure that we're, uh, we're a part of that and making sure that that's being done here. So, and I'm trying to keep it to five minutes. I have a tendency to go a little long. And then I've just, just wanted to wrap up by saying again, I just, uh, I'm really looking forward to the opportunity. I hope that the board would allow me to include to be a part of the board that just helps us build a community school district here that everyone inside the district, students, teachers, community members can all be proud of. And I'll take your questions.
Thank you. What questions do we have?
Yeah, hi, Mr. Lyons. It's Keith McCucci. Can you hear me?
Absolutely.
Hey, uh, so, so thanks for applying. I, I do have one question um specifically around how, how did you sort of prepare yourself uh for, for this position? Maybe in doing research, I was looking at uh your application. And it, and it, it kind of looked like you hadn't attended so many meetings, which is not uncommon, it's fine. I just wanted to know kind of how you prepared or to walk into this during a pandemic.
Well, I've, I've only physically attended the last two meetings, but I've, I've, I've read up on the uh the board minutes and the, uh, all the commentations and things that are available, any uh news coverage as well. As far as this position directly, uh, I've been in contact with a couple of members of the board to uh fill out their uh feedback, find out what uh, you know, you're looking for in a position, who you look, what type of person you want on your board and what I can do and what my strengths would be, and if I would be a good fit. Uh, you know, I didn't want to waste anyone's time with my background there. And I've also reached out to uh some of my friends that are, are past associates that were superintendents at past districts and asked them, what would a good board, what would a good board member do? And how would I, what can I do to come to the board to help the administration as well, and what can I do that way? So I've done a lot of work that way. And then as far as board members or boards in particular, or um in general, excuse me, I've been involved or covering uh boards of education since the eighties. Show my age a little bit. Um, so I'm very aware of the inner workings of boards, how they work, what school uh boards are needed to do and requirements. And what's held me back from the, being involved with this kind of thing in the past is I understand, most importantly, the time commitment that's involved. Anyone I know who has uh taken on this kind of venture, their immediate response months later, two months, three months down the road, I didn't know how much time was going to be involved. I know how much time is going to be involved. I wouldn't do this if I didn't have the time to dedicate to the board properly.
Great, thank you very much.
Amon Stack. Can I go?
No.
Um, so you have a very impressive resume. Uh, I know there's lots of professional, you know, references here. Do you have any public service experience or volunteer experience under your belt?
Uh, well, I volunteer at um, at the schools. I've been um, you know, I've been involved in pretty much every event they've had at Trump Bowersville in the last two years. Uh, as far as, you know, your, you know, setup involvement, teaching, running kids, running around during field day, chaperoning field trips, those kinds of things. I'm currently volunteering at a uh community organization in Pen, um, East Greenville, excuse me, it's called Bike Consol. They do um, one, they're a bike shop, and they, they uh train people in the community uh to be a part of that as well. So I'm, I'm getting involved, I'm being involved there. I've always just been involved um throughout the neighborhood. I've uh, was a past member of the um QNB, I'm trying to remember what it actually stands for. It's a business uh reference organization that I, that I've been involved with as well.
I, thank you.
Thank you. I, I have a question for you then as well.
Go ahead.
Um, so seeing it, bear in mind, I'm looking over at another monitor here, so gazing off into the distance here. But um, I did notice you, you have a lot of press experience. And that, that would give you a pretty unique perspective of, of monitoring or, or witnessing how school boards act. So it looks like you were um mainly up in the Pocono area. Did you cover many school districts when you were doing that, or was it one or two, or?
When I was a reporter, my prime responsibility was the Pocono Mountain School District, which was, that's where I grew up. And so it worked out really well that I worked, I worked with the board and I worked, I covered that, that geographic area as a reporter. I also covered Pike County Government as a separate uh beat. Then as an editor, I've covered basically every school district in the Express Times readership area, which is like three, two and a half counties or something like that, Jersey, Pennsylvania, New York. And then when I was up in um, uh, I worked in a paper in Portervis, New York, that was actually three states. So I've covered districts in Pennsylvania, New York, and New Jersey as well. So I know that there's um, you know, different districts, people will move into, say, an area like here, coming from New York and New Jersey, and they don't understand that doesn't operate the same way. I've had that experience of covering those districts as well, so I can explain a little bit or help explain how things are different and what they do.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
You're not going to ask me the school one?
I, I was going to ask you if nobody else was. Yeah, tell us your opinion about getting kids back into school, your opinion about that, and, you know.
I mean, I'll start, I'll start right up front and tell you that um I personally signed up for my kids to go back five days a week. I feel that with their IEPs, with the programs that they're involved, it will be the best thing for them personally. And, and I believe that um, that that's, that's how they'll succeed. And knowing that there's flexibility in moving in and out as far as that's concerned. Now, overall, and what I've seen in districts, what, what the, what the community needs to know, what a district needs to do is, and, and your, your uh doctor, I can't, I pronounced his name wrong, the guy who did the last meeting, Damsker. He made a really good point of this, and it was the point that I felt the message was coming home strong and clear. The most important thing that a school district needs to do is let their families know that they're creating the safest place for them. And that's what I see here, and that's what I see in districts. And districts that are failing or, or having the issues come across where it's not working, they don't seem to be presenting that message properly. And that's the biggest thing there. They want to make, you want to make sure your schools are, are known to be the safest place for the children. And the way that's going to work, I've seen people who are talking about things where they're saying, uh, you know, kids aren't going to sit still, they're not going to go, um, you know, they're not going to social distance properly, they're going to come home with a Spider-Man mask instead of the, the, the Mutant Ninja Turtles when they went on, things like that. What's going to stop that from happening, what I've seen here, strong leadership and the building level and the classroom level will make that successful. And the folks that I've seen here, I understand- And the folks that I've seen here, I understand and I believe will be able to do that. And if they buy in, you know, the the Adam Schmuckers of the world and the Dr. Bradleys of the world, if they're buying in and they're presenting their staff properly, I know my kids last year, they listened to their teachers. In fact, and sometimes when we went to virtual, I had to ask the teachers, I need to make sure to tell them that you're checking this too, because they'll listen to you as much or more than they'll listen to me. And if the if the building level can do that, the community will follow, the kids will follow, especially at the elementary school level. We all know that elementary school kids follow rules, they bring home papers, it's when you get to the higher grades. But as a community, we need to be strong and and put ourselves forward positively that way.
Thank you. All right, well, I think that is going to be all for our questions. Thank you again for being willing to put your your foot forward and get into the lion's den here, as it's a very difficult time for school board members all around the country.
Thank you. I mean, it's, I used to say this when I was an editor, whenever things went bad, it's
Sorry, I tried to unclick that. I thought he was going to be done and he started talking.
Sorry. It's okay.
That's hilarious.
It was.
Joe, I was thinking that's what they should do on those award shows, like the Academy Awards, just, you know, click them off.
Even Dr. Harner's picture is laughing.
All right, Izzy? Okay.
All right, so I guess we're going to go ahead and move on to our next candidate, Mrs. Jennifer Mackowitz, if I'm saying that correctly. Joe, are we having luck locating her?
Sure.
Oh, she is.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good. How's everyone tonight?
Doing about as good as everybody can do?
Yeah.
Thanks for joining us. I was just going to say, yeah, tell us about yourself. You sound like you're ready to to tell us so. Go right ahead.
Yeah, so I'm thinking I'm pretty much, I think, the last one and the only female that has decided to jump on this bandwagon of the board. I am a mom of two boys, also in the Quaker Town School District, sixth grade and eighth grade. I am also a sadly former member of GHR, who was contracted through the Bucks IU, and I worked at Trump Bowersville Elementary in the autistic support classroom. And I've been with the same classroom for three and a half years. So I've worked very closely in school with the teachers, with the students, not just the autistic students, but the students who are just general education and being in the classroom with them. And other than that, I have 17 years of healthcare background. So dealing with the pandemic currently, I know, you know, the things that need to be done as far as, you know, keeping the kids safe and making sure that protocol is followed and, you know, what needs to be done in these schools and to help the teachers, not just the teachers, but also help the students as well.
Thank you. I will open it up to questions from the board.
Yeah, hi. This is, is it Mackowitz? Did I get it right?
Yes, that's that's correct.
Hi, Keith McCucci. Nice to, nice to meet you. So I've asked the other candidates, I'll ask you as well. You know, what have you done sort of to prepare yourself for the position as a school director here at Quaker Town?
So unlike the other candidates who have former, either former experience or government knowledge, or have been actually out in like the public in that way, I am coming to you as a parent, as a former instructional aide, someone who has hands-on experience working in the classroom. No, I haven't watched the school board meetings. I read about them, but I have not watched them. I know it takes dedication and time to put into that, and I am all for that. I want to make sure that the schools that we have are getting and doing what they can. I know not just the teachers, but the principals as well, work hard to make sure that not only the kids are safe, but that the teachers are safe too. And this is just something we couldn't prepare for. So to make sure that, you know, being on the board, I can, you know, maybe give insight of being, since I've been in the classroom, you know, this is what maybe the classrooms could use, maybe being there in that capacity for not just the general education students, but the IU students as well, of what works and what doesn't work.
Great. Thank you very much.
So nice to see you virtually in person. I think I've seen you around in some mutual groups in the neighborhood that we may be a part of.
Yes.
I I was curious, what compelled you really to self nominate yourself for this particular position right here, right now?
Okay, so definitely I self nominated. I think I blew everybody away when I said I wanted to do this. I didn't just, I mean, I didn't talk to anybody about it. I just said, there's an opening and I want to see if I can make a difference. I want to be a part of the bigger picture. I want to be a part of this group of adults who are working to make the school and the school district a better place. And having my kids in the school, I can tell you, my, both my kids went to Richland Elementary, and it, I couldn't say enough good things about them. I just absolutely love it. My oldest has gone through the sixth grade center with Mr. Thompson, and I have had interactions with him, and he is just amazing. So and then I've worked over at Trump Bowersville with Mr. Adam Schmucker. And I know from all three of those, all three of the principals from Richland and Sixth Grade Center and Trump Bowersville, you know, I want to help support them as well as they are supporting their staff and kids.
Thank you.
Who else has a question?
Isn't Chris going to ask his stock question?
I kind of got that when, I got the gist of it, but if you want to mention publicly, how do you feel about reopening schools and having the kids get back into buildings?
So I sign my children up for the hybrid. I would prefer them to be in school. But seeing what I have seen going on as far as, you know, other schools, I have family that are in other school districts who have gone virtual. I have had conversations with other people and I would like to see there be more hybrid, giving more space for the IEPs and 504s, the IU kids to be put into class, because that's where they learn best. Having a child myself who has an IEP and who would learn best being in school 100% of the time, I know is not feasible. I would like to see, you know, the precautions put in place, but to be able to at least get into a routine to have them go to school. I do believe the kids need to be in school. But if it's not safe, it's not safe. And that's what we have to look at. And being in healthcare, I need to remind myself that it's about safety, not just of the children, but of the teachers too, and of the rest of the staff that are there. It's going to be a hard decision that you guys have to make. And if I could be a part of that decision, I would, you know, definitely be there to listen to each one of your opinions on it and, you know, weigh in on how we can make it, come in, come to a common agreement on it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. And at this time, we'll excuse you and then we'll go back to Mr. Smol.
Your mic died, Kaylin. Still dead.
Your mic is dead. We can't hear you.
Sounds like the batteries die.
It is not a battery. It plugs into my USB.
Now you're back.
Okay, maybe it, maybe I had to just, okay. Sorry about that, guys. All right, so I was saying, Mr. Smolinski, if he is available.
Could you, what's the spelling of his last name?
S M.
Go ahead.
S M O L I N S K Y.
I do not see anybody with that last name in here and the first name, just in case he's.
Michael.
I do have just one plain Michael, if you want to take a shot.
Why not?
We'll find out if this is him or not.
Hot luck.
It's the Michael lottery.
All right, Michael, if you are the right Michael, or if you're not, can you unmute and let us know?
No, that, I'm not the right one.
Oh, no. Okay, sorry, Michael.
Thank you for letting us know.
Do you want to tell it?
You don't want to be on the school board, that Michael?
Maybe next time.
We got a couple of questions for you.
Quickly. Yeah, smart man, smart man.
I did not get any further communication from Mr. Smolinski once I instructed him to sign in using the link on the district website, and then he would be led into the meeting. So I don't know at this point.
Well.
It was like half an hour ago.
I was going to say, we did give adequate time. And I assume that if he tried to get on and wasn't able, that he would have let us know. Okay. Should we move on to the vote? So let me, let me just understand this correctly, Anita. Are we going to vote for both the seats and then swear in?
Yes.
Each one? So does that mean that we'll only need four votes for each?
Correct.
Okay. Is everybody else okay with that on the board?
Because a member would have to be sworn in in order to vote.
Right.
Yeah, that makes sense. The new person won't know.
Okay, again, I do want to just let the candidates know, every single one of you that did apply, that we really appreciate the fact that you've done so. It really, I think, shows a lot about your character, that you're really willing to step up and make a difference during this difficult time. So very much appreciate it. With that, I think that we should go ahead and move on to our Region One seat again, where candidates are Mr. Gary Vetrow, Mr. Ronald Jackson, and Mr. Michael Smolinski. And so we're going to do a roll call. And at that time, please say the name of the candidate that you would wish to vote for in the first round. Does that make sense to everybody? If it doesn't, let me know.
So they are, just so I'm understanding, they are going, I'm going to go through the roll call, they're going to name the candidate that they are interested in. Then are we going to narrow that down and?
Only if we don't have four votes.
Okay.
Am I understanding, we're not voting on Mr. Smolinski or?
No, you still have the opportunity to vote for him.
Okay.
And a board member does not, or a board applicant does not necessarily have to be interviewed. You can make your decision based on the application, if you so choose.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Kern for Region One. Mr. McCucci.
Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Akmanowicz.
Believe Mr. Jackson will be the proper choice.
Ms. Weed.
Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Reimers.
Mr. Vetrow.
Mr. Spear.
Ron Jackson.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Ron Jackson, welcome back.
With a vote of six to one, Mr. Jackson has been selected as the board member for Region One. Congratulations, Mr. Jackson.
Congratulations, Ron.
By the way, I think you're crazy, Ron.
You had the chance to run.
I was going to say the same thing.
Yeah, no, seriously. Crazy during this time.
But also thanks to Mr. Vetrow for putting his name out there again.
Absolutely.
Yes, absolutely.
Do we want to bring Ron into the panel now, since he was voted, or no?
I think not until he's sworn in. Isn't that how it would work?
Yeah, that's fine. All right, we're going to move on to Region Three seat. And this, for those candidates, just as a reminder, we have Mr. Stephen Klein, Mr. Joseph Lyons, and Ms. Ms. Jennifer Mackowitz.
Mr. Kern.
Mr. Klein.
Mr. McCucci.
Mr. Klein.
Mr. Akmanowicz.
Mr. Klein.
Ms. Weed.
Mr. Lyons.
Mr. Reimers.
Mr. Lyons.
Mr. Spear.
Joe Lyons.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Where are we at right now? I don't even know. Am I the tiebreaker?
Yes, you are.
Tiebreaker.
Ms. Mitchell.
Oh, God.
No pressure.
Pressure, pressure, pressure.
This is really tough, guys.
It is really, it was, it is incredibly tough.
I will say, the reason I'm going to vote for the person that I am is not because I feel like the other candidates are not qualified. I will say that I feel like during a pandemic, we need somebody who can hit the ground running, who knows what's going on. And for that reason, I'll vote for Mr. Klein.
That's four votes for Mr. Klein, three votes for Mr. Lyons. Mr. Klein has been voted into the seat for Region Three. Congratulations, Mr. Klein.
I would like to kind request Mr. Lyons definitely run next time around.
Yeah, I was going to say, we could use somebody on the board with that amount of experience, it seems like.
Yeah, I was very impressed.
Same.
But I agree with Kaylin.
Yeah, ditto. And this term only serves till, what, next December, right?
It serves until November 2021 when the elections, that's the remainder of the seat for Mr. Anderson's seat and Mr. Jackson's seat.
So, yeah, so this is a, this is a short-term position in that it is going to finish out the term of the the position that was vacated.
Correct.
So it will be about a little bit over a year commitment. Okay, so then if Mrs. Guyer is is on the call with us, should we move forward with the swearing in?
Can you let Mr. Jackson and Mr. Klein back in if they are not in the meeting, Joe?
Yeah, let me get her audio coming through. Give me one second.
Good evening. This is Judge Guyer. How is everybody?
Hi, Your Honor.
Fine, how are you?
We appreciate you coming in at the last minute. Thank you, Judge.
Absolutely. My pleasure. No problem.
Thank you, Judge.
I'm assuming, since the judge can't, she might just see audio, but both board members are with us right now.
Fantastic. Do you have a preference on who I begin with?
You can go ahead with Mr. Jackson, since he was voted first.
Okay. Mr. Jackson, I'm going to administer the oath now. When I ask you to, please state your name. Are you ready to begin?
I am.
Okay, I state your name.
I, Ronald Jackson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of Amer-
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations, sir. Thank you again for serving.
Thank you, Ms. Geyer. Good Geyer.
And that should bring us to Mr. Klein.
Hello, Your Honor.
How are you this evening?
Doing well, thank you.
Well, wonderful. I am very happy to be able to administer you your oath. Are you ready to begin?
Yes.
Okay, I state your name.
I, Stephen Klein.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
I'm sorry, you broke up there. Could you repeat that?
Yes, that I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations, sir. Thank you again for being willing to serve.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Everybody, have a wonderful night. Thank you for including me. It was an honor.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Welcome, gentlemen.
I feel like we have the old team back. A little bit.
Get the band back together.
Well, with that, thank you all for bearing with us as we got through that process. I realize that it's almost 8:30, and a lot of you are probably here to hear more about the, about our analysis. And so we'll move on to the next item of the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes. And so I'll need a motion to approve the minutes of the June, that's not right.
July.
Oh, it's all of them? June, July, and is that right, Anita?
July 9th and July 29th. We did not have the minutes on the last two agendas for July.
Okay, that makes sense. So then I'll need a motion to approve all of those minutes.
Double moved.
A second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to our public comment. How many public comments do we have this evening?
Terri Sinangelo is on vacation, so Janelle Hilton will be reading the public comment. Janelle, can you hear me? She hear, Joe?
She will be momentarily. I wasn't, I thought I had added her to the other line. She'll be here, give her one second.
Hi, Anita, I can hear you. Good evening, everyone. We have approximately 20 comments at the moment that have come in.
Okay, so, um, this is what I would suggest, just for the sake of time. I do want to make sure we do, we get in, everyone that put in a comment, obviously, they took the time out of their schedule to do that, and I don't want to disregard them. However, I also realize we are approaching 8:30, and so I, if we could, Janelle, if you wouldn't mind, if you see any comments that seem to be pretty similar, and I know I'm asking you this sort of off the cuff, if you could try to consolidate the ones that seem to be similar. Again, any public comment we don't read, we still will make sure to make that public later. I also want, I don't know if you did receive, I have a comment from Mr. Nguyen that I do want to make sure gets read.
Yes, I do have that.
Okay. All right, proceed.
Okay, great. So the first comment coming in is from Janaya Billman, who is a staff member within the district. In QCSD, we set high standards if we reopen in person. Our plan should insist on the highest standard of safety. There should be six feet between all desks, no exceptions, even if that means we can only offer hybrid and virtual. We would never ask for minimal effort of teachers in their planning and instruction, or of our students in their learning. Let's not allow ourselves to use minimal distancing guidelines of three feet to pack more people into these enclosed spaces for prolonged contact, sometimes unmasked. Let's be a model of how to open correctly, with the highest standards in place for all those who have to go back into these buildings. If we are committed to safety, then let's meet the highest, most widely accepted standard of six feet. The second comment is from Kimberly Conseck from Richland Township, and she has a student at Quakertown High School. I'm just wondering how much notice we are going to have for our children's schedules. We need time to purchase school supplies, et cetera. Maybe I missed an email somewhere along the lines, when we will have definitive answers of whether there will be live instruction, hybrid, or online. The next comment is from Andrea Barlow of Quakertown Borough, with a student at the Quakertown High School. In the event school plans need to be altered, would you consider making the students in the high school building go virtual and utilize the high school building as overflow for the students in lower grades, or ones with special needs, IEPs, and 504s to attend live instruction? High school age students are in a better position to work independently, which also helps the parent work from home to focus on work. It also makes it easier for the parent that can't work from home, because the child is old enough to leave home alone and trust their ability to log into the virtual school time. The next public comment is from Ryan Nguyen, QCEA president. This one's a little lengthier. Dear members of the board, first and foremost, I want to thank you for the time and energy you have put in over the past few weeks and months. Given the situation we find ourselves in, you have demonstrated not only your willingness, but your dedication to our community by putting in a tremendous amount of time to research almost every COVID-related topic in order to make the best decision possible for our community. I would also like to thank the teachers and administrators who continue to work tirelessly on various task forces focused on putting us on a solid path to a successful school year. Despite all of this hard work and dedication by all, QCEA members are still confused and concerned about how we can effectively teach three different models of teaching concurrently at the same high caliber that our students, administrators, board members, and community members are used to. Our students need to get the most out of their teachers. If you ask our teachers to teach three different models at once, the quality of our students' learning experience will be greatly diminished. We are already in a situation in which classrooms will not be normal, where teachers can no longer use manipulatives, have shared class resources, participate in group learning activities, and utilize other engagement strategies that made their classes extra engaging and fun. If you ask teachers to plan and carry out teaching for three different types of students at the same time, you are eliminating what they can do even more due to the logistics that go into planning and carrying out a three-pronged model. Please do not set us up for failure. With that being said, I am requesting that the board revise their plans to align with the recently released state health and education department guidelines for instructional models, which is based on two standard pub health, public health metrics, incidence rate, and the percent positivity of diagnostic testing. These guidelines were created knowing that administrators and board members are not health experts. None of the three categories outlined in the guidelines ask teachers to teach three different models. In fact, since Bucks County is considered to be in the moderate category, the recommendation is that we only teach hybrid or full virtual. The state does not recommend switching to 100% full-time live instruction until counties qualify for the low category, one below where Quakertown currently is. Some of you have noted that since part of our county does not have high infection rates, we shouldn't have to follow the guidelines. Unfortunately, that's not how it works. The guidelines are based on the whole county. Not following the guidelines based on that type of thinking would be like saying, I visit a quarantine state, but I was in a part of the state that has a low infection rate, so I don't have to quarantine. I'm asking that your plan reflects these recent guidelines, and that you never ask teachers to teach three model modes of instruction at the same time, because doing so is unrealistic. Teachers continue to lack confidence in portions of the safety plan. As you look to move forward with analyzing our plan for the startup of school, we ask that you continue to remain vigilant regarding safety, and do so with a keen eye towards the directives that kept the vast majority of our stakeholders safe until this point. So far, as a community, we have been lucky that we have had a relatively number, low number of cases, and we want to keep it that way. Focusing on the safest restart of the school year will ensure the well-being of our students and their families, as well as our staff and their families. I'm specifically asking that six-foot social distancing be the minimum for our classrooms, and should be a non-negotiable for students, families, and staff alike. This is the same recommendation PDE provided and should be followed. Providing any distance close to four and a half feet would be irresponsible. Guaranteeing six-foot distances will help to build up the confidence in our teachers and maximize the safe distance between our students and staff members, as has been widely recommended. Additionally, prior to the start of the school year, clear and detailed expectations have to be shared with students, families, and staff members regarding mask procedures, including the consequences for not following or taking the procedure seriously or safely. We all need to know when masks should be worn, how mask breaks work, or whether or not this policy falls under the dress code. Again, continuing to polish our safety measures will build confidence in our staff for a safe return. We understand this is completely uncharted territory, and everyone is doing the best they can with the information they have available to them. While we may not be able to get back to normal right now, the quickest way there is by creating the safest environment possible to slow the spread of the virus. The community, families, and students need to truly know that your teachers, nurses, school psychologists, guidance counselors, and other staff members want nothing more to be in school again for our students, providing the rich educational opportunities and support we always have. We desire that because we know the impact we have on our students' lives and the building of this community's future. Respectfully, Ryan Nguyen, QCEA president. The next comment comes from Kevin McLaughlin, a staff member. Whichever two modes of instruction you choose this evening, please ensure that our students, staff, and families at home are protected by a six-foot minimum for physical distancing. We are not dealing with the same virus Europe tackled months ago. We are learning new information about this virus every week. A team of virologists and aerosol scientists have proven what has been suspected, like the coronavirus is infectious through the air and aerosols. They collected aerosols from a COVID-19 patient at a distance of seven to 16 feet. Please protect our community by at least enforcing a minimum of six foot of physical distance. The next comment is from Corinne Libatore, staff member. I love my job teaching for QCSD, and I want to return to the classroom, but I'm asking you to reconsider in-person instruction as COVID-19 testing is not where it should be to be safely reopen. I recently experienced this as it took days to schedule a test and eight days to get test results. Without rapid testing result, students and teachers will not know if their symptoms are due to allergies, the common cold, or if they have been exposed to COVID-19. And without testing and quarantining, they will continue to expose others. Please consider reopening our schools slowly to allow time for testing to improve by starting the school year virtually, moving to a hybrid model, then a live model based on a demonstrated ability of this community to test. The next comment comes from Jennifer Padmodiban, Richland Township. She has students at the high school 6th grade center in Trumburrisville. If the district needs to move to hybrid for all, please consider set days, Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday, or similar, instead of A/B, which will change weekly and be a nightmare for working parents. Your hard work is appreciated. The next comment is from Elizabeth Lynn of Trumburrisville Borough. Will school be starting on September 14th as the QCSD website indicates? Also, will informational packets be sent out soon in regards to the children's, new teachers', school supplies, et cetera? And when will we find out our children will be, what format they will be learning, live in classroom, A/B, live virtual, or only virtual? How would school drop off and pick up work for walkers? How will the younger children's grades advancement work? Next comment is from Marta Mizlowski of Richland Township with a student at Poff Elementary. The CDC recommends that six-foot distance is not feasible. There should be physical barriers like plexiglass installed. Would this be done for some grades where six-foot distance is not feasible? The next comment is Sarah Busdigan from Quakertown Borough with a student at Quakertown Elementary. For those of us sending kindergarteners to school for the first time, is there any plan at all to provide some kind of orientation? I'm not sure, I realize it's not high on the priority list, but my child is uneasy about walking into a brand-new building alone, and it's difficult as a parent not knowing what her daily environment will look like.
Dr. Harner, will we have an orientation for kindergarteners?
We'll have an orientation for everybody, soon as we know what we're doing, and after tonight, I hope.
Building principals usually get in touch.
We'll have open houses. They may be by Zoom, local Zoom meetings, but we'll have orientations for everybody.
And supply lists. That was the other reoccurring one.
Okay, the next comment comes from Kate Federoff of Richland Township, and she is also a staff member. I'm a teacher and community member. I long for a safe time to be with my students, but that day is not here. I have not even visited indoors with my family. Please choose virtual instruction, protect our community. Offering three teaching modalities will spread teachers too thin. There will be no possibility of doing our very best or connecting with students. If not virtual, use two modalities, live or virtual. Ban indoor mask breaks. As soon as masks are removed in our classrooms, the space is compromised. If we go live, mandate safe mask breaks. Please do not overcrowd or use overflow zones. Make six-foot social distancing mandatory. Please empower us to deliver the excellence expected from QCSD teachers. I'm gonna take a couple. The next comment is from Philip Vanderstein of Richland Township.
Let's let it be the last one, and I apologize again.
Okay, sure, no problem.
Yes, thank you.
The next one is from Philip Vanderstein of Richland Township, and his comment is, now the state legislator has approved postponement of school property taxes, including the 2% early payment payment date. Will the board vote to extend the due date for school property tax in line with the FIT guidelines, the 2% due date November 11th, and the full payment December 16th, penalty after this date?
Will Zach be able to comment on that?
Yes, he can.
That was a topic in finance at the end of the year. The Finance Committee did not recommend moving forward with it, but we did note it was still going through the legislation. We had hoped it would have been done before all the tax bills came out, which was not the case, so I guess the board technically could make a decision on that still, but I think we should consult with all of our tax collectors on.
Dude, I have to start this meeting in like, one second. Like, literally.
Kaylin, you're on mic, hot mic.
Why are you talking to her kid?
I can tell you're talking to your child.
Thanks, Zach. Hey, while we're waiting, Dr. Harner, the second person that had made comments and asked a question, can you make sure that that woman gets your blog so that she stays up to date on what's going on? Can you make sure maybe she's on the list or reach out to her? Can you make sure maybe she's on the list or reach out to her where to sign up?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Also, you know, all these comments and stuff make me want to ask, is it possible for us to reach back out to all the, you know, I know we're gonna see what happens, but I just want to make sure I say this out loud. If we are in person, could we reach back out to all those in-person parents and make sure that they're still firm on that decision to want to stay in person and give them another opportunity to go if there's another option, different way?
All right.
I guess the question is if we would be, and we'll get to that later, if we would be eliminating one option, would we give the parents a choice to then revisit their registration?
Well, why don't we get through the meeting first? And by the way, that was my, that was my children, you know? When it's bedtime, that's when they want snacks. You know, that's when they're all hungry. They're not hungry at dinner, they're hungry whenever it's time to go to bed. Okay, so, so yes, I apologize about that. All right, so let's move on. It's almost, it's quarter till nine, and I know Dr. Harner and your team are so excited about telling us about this analysis that you worked so hard on.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. Good evening, board members, new board members, congratulations. Welcome to the team of 10. Tonight, we have three presentations. The first one is about the effectiveness of our instructional program this, this year and how, what that's gonna look like. I know a lot of members of our audience are excited about and very much interested in what we're gonna be doing. The second presentation is gonna be about substitutes in our process that we'll be doing in staffing our schools. This spins off of Mr. McCucci. You're at the last board meeting, you talked about hiring additional substitutes. So we have broken it down, and I know last night I had the opportunity to, in a retreat format, present these, the second two presentations. The, this presentation about substitutes and also about how we're registration and how it will fit in our schools. And then that's where we're really gonna get into some really good discussion. But Mr. McCucci, this, the second presentation is in response to your, your idea. Also, something that we have been working on behind the scenes, and I think you'll see some familiar things. So without further ado, Dr. Hoffman, I'd like you to kick it off tonight with, about our instruction.
All right, and Mr. Kuzo gets to set up for us. Thanks very much for the opportunity to present to all of you tonight. I do recognize that in the interest of time, we may be moving through this more quickly than, than some may like. So please know that if anyone in the public has any questions, they can feel free to email me, and I will do my best to get an answer to you. But tonight, we're gonna talk briefly about the instructional model for this upcoming year. We've had a lot of questions from parents and, and also from teachers about what that's going to look like and how it will differ from what we saw in the spring. So just as a brief overview, we'll be looking at the task force work as a memory, as a quick reminder for all of you. We've had over 120 people working on these four task force groups, and that has informed many of the recommendations and suggestions that we have here tonight.
Excuse me, Dr. Hoffman. You're echoing. Is your microphone close to you or far away from you?
My microphone is part of my computer. Is it better if I lean forward? No better? Is that better?
Little bit, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, maybe Mr. Kuzo knows how I could fix that.
I don't think it's terrible, but.
Okay, now I feel like I'm awkwardly leaning in, so I'm gonna turn my video off so no one has to watch that. Okay, and then we're also going to talk a little bit about professional learning and then supports for parents. You can keep going, Joe. So our overarching question has been, how do we effectively and efficiently design powerful learning experiences regardless of the model that we're teaching under? So we know we're working with multiple scenarios. We have to be fluid and flexible and make sure that what we offer our students and families is also flexible. We have budget challenges and considerations to work through, and then also we have been thinking a lot about teacher capacity and workload. Hearing feedback, we are certainly going to be looking at both asynchronous and synchronous learning opportunities for students. We know there are a lot of parents who are asking for more synchronous or, you know, connected opportunities where their students are participating as live as they can from home, if that makes sense. And that will be happening. But we also have a lot of parents who have reached out and said that due to their schedule, they would prefer if their students who are virtual could participate asynchronously or on their own time. So we will be blending those two opportunities for family. We have shortened the school day. Sorry, we've shortened the school day to provide opportunities for teachers to connect with their virtual learners. And live students will also be looking at that asynchronous learning opportunity so that we have a real blended environment and allow for more seamless planning for our teachers. We know that one of the biggest questions we've received is about attendance and engagement. So we know that everybody is in a different situation and that parents who selected virtual instruction have varying degrees of what they're looking for in that. So what has been determined is that attendance for virtual students will be based on completion of asynchronous experiences and how they're doing on their learning tasks and not based on whether or not they are present for any synchronous instruction. So that allows virtual learners who need to work on their own time to be able to do that. We're also gonna be looking at a lot of different assessments. We've purchased benchmark assessments that will be given somewhere around the second week of school. We want to give students a chance to get in and get acclimated. A lot of time in the beginning is going to be spent on relationship building, which we'll hear about shortly. But we are going to be using diagnostic, pre-assessment, common assessment, form assessment strategies to make sure that we know what gaps our students may have and how we can help them to grow. I'm going to ask Mr. Evans if he would like to speak to our blended learning model. He's one of our task force leaders.
Thanks, Dr. Hoffman. So again, as we've discussed, or as we begin discussing what the models can look like, you can see an example of a blended learning model there, which kind of highlights multiple models. And the one that our teachers have started to embrace are around a station-rotation model of blended learning. And blended learning has been around for a long time. That concept is not necessarily new, but it's this idea that we can be using asynchronous and synchronous learning experiences, both online and offline experiences as well. So I think there's a large assumption that everything has to be done on a device, and that's just simply not true. As our teachers have worked with our instructional coaches and have collaborated together, they've started to look at this blended learning model and realize that there are some ways that we can continue to do the high-quality things that we did in the classroom and then leverage the tools that we've had access to for a while. The second component of this is this idea of the flipped classroom, which again is not necessarily a new model, but it is one that's kind of going to have to be embraced this year, which is that our students would do some work independently on their own asynchronously and then maximize the time in class to do the deeper learning, to get feedback from their teachers, to work collaboratively as reasonably possible in a socially-distanced environment. And I'm gonna turn it back to Dr. Hoffman. Well, I'm sorry, to Ms. Alexa Carter.
It's actually me, but thank you. So thanks, Mr. Evans. So one of the big topics that our teachers have been talking about is an opportunity to collaborate. One of the, I guess if we're looking for silver linings in the spring, was that we have the opportunity for our teachers to do some real in-depth collaboration that maybe we hadn't had time for in the past. And we'd like to keep some of that collaborative, collaboration going because we found that our educators really felt, in their words, supported by being able to have that extra time to work with their teachers. So those opportunities are going to be provided regardless of exactly what we, what we vote on or what you vote on in terms of how, how instruction is going to be delivered. But we want to make sure that we know that that's an important part that we are thinking about. Communication to parents is going to happen through Seesaw and Canvas, certainly, but we also want to make sure that you know that we are committed to providing some greater communication to our virtual learners than some of them had experienced based on feedback that we received. So our teachers have always communicated with parents via email and phone calls, so that will, will continue. But we're going to ask that weekly overviews of what students can expect will be posted by Monday morning so that you have a little bit of a better glimpse at what the week to come looks like. And then also the daily learning activities and any available opportunities for your students would be in place by the beginning of the day. One of the pieces of feedback we received was that sometimes parents would log in in the morning and things weren't available, and then later in the day they showed up and they felt like they missed it. So we'll be working hard to make sure that those opportunities are available early so that you know what they are. And we'll be looking for greater feedback to students in Seesaw and Canvas so that parents can be aware. Of course, we'll also have a slide later where we talk about feedback where you can still look in Power School, but this should be feedback for students. Our curriculum, which obviously our office is, is very tied to, will, will be driven, if we need to change something, those changes will be driven by student assessment data. So we don't want to take apart pieces of our curriculum that we know are strong, that we know are rooted in standards, and that we know are things that students need to learn to be able to move forward and be successful. But we are aware that there may be some areas where the assessment data tells us that we need to adjust a little bit. So we are, we are going to be doing that, and of course, we will do that with teacher involvement as we always do. Most of our curriculum maps have been loaded into Atlas, which was one of our goals last year, superintendent goals. So anything that is available has been uploaded into Atlas. And teachers will continue with their grade level material this year, differentiating where needed, except for, as I mentioned, if there's anything that we see across the grade level that needs to be addressed, we'll certainly step in and do that. Another big question that we get is the daily schedule. Those schedules are being determined by the building principals. There are some determining factors about how the school operates, how much room they have, what classrooms they have available, how many, how many classrooms at each grade level they have and things like that. So the schedules that I'm going to show in a minute are really not, you know, specific schedules. So please understand that the specific schedule will be coming from building principals. So here's just a sample of elementary. If you are a live student, you may start a morning meeting at nine o'clock. Hybrid students who are at school would obviously be participating in that. And then we hope that hybrid students at home or those students who are 100% virtual would also be participating synchronously in that activity. The live students and hybrid students who are at school could then go ahead and follow the daily schedule. And the opportunity for students who are at home to follow the schedule exists. But as we mentioned before, the family may choose to do things in a different order or to allow for things to happen at different times of the day. And we wanted to, you know, accommodate that. So that would be a family's choice how that schedule played out the rest of the day for those students. And then at the end of the day, whatever time that's determined, all of our learners would then be at home, and they would have opportunity for some asynchronous additional learning while the teachers had time to have their planning and connect with other people.
So they could do the morning meeting later then as well? Sorry to interrupt.
Sure, no problem. So yes, the, you know, some of those things are still being worked out, and some of that will be, you know, conversations with the teacher and the principal. But the hope would be that, that those opportunities would be available for students to participate in. Here is a sample secondary schedule. You'll see that it's basically, basically the same as the previous. You can go ahead, Joe. I'm gonna ask Mr. Evans again to speak to the digital tools.
So one of the great pieces of feedback we got from our families in the spring was during emergency in distance learning, was that there needed to be some more consistency to support our families and students. And so teachers on our task forces have been working to build and design clear expectations for our teachers to use, to more consistently use Seesaw and Canvas. And in Canvas, for example, we're going to deploy what's called a blueprint, which means that there will be a common structure for all secondary Canvas courses. So every student 6 through 12 will have the same homepage. And then certainly the teachers will customize their courses based on their, their, their own needs, but students will have a common way of accessing that. And then as a reminder, some of the frustrations in the spring from our families were around accessing digital curriculum. And we always want to remind everyone that there are many wonderful resources that the board has graciously provided us over the years that we haven't always used because we've had in-class textbooks. But certainly in this environment, we're going to be leaning on those digital curriculum resources as well. Next slide. So for Seesaw, just as a reminder, for those of you who are not familiar with Seesaw, it will be a consistent learning model for our kids. Our teachers have done a great job of designing activities that can be shared across grade levels or at least across the building within a grade level. And so we hope to see some more consistency as our teachers collaborate. Next slide, please. And then here you can see an example of what that blueprint will look like for our students. And so you can see there in the middle that that will be a consistent format for all students. And then when they click on those links, those links there in the middle, those blue buttons, will access the different areas of the courses that teachers will personalize.
Mr. Evans, is there a way to do a blueprint in Seesaw?
There is not a way to do a blueprint within Seesaw because the, the structure of Seesaw is relatively the same in the sense that our teachers will be using each student's own learning journal for the activities, and then they use the class blog for any collaborative. So there's really only two places in Seesaw. So there really isn't a blueprint for that. Now, the activities, with that said, Mr. Reimers, if teachers collaborate and use similar activities, those structures would be the same.
Is there an expectation that they would be doing that?
I think there's an expectation that, well, not just an expectation, but they will use activities that are structured in the same way just because that's the nature of how Seesaw gets deployed. So for example, if a teacher provides directions for a student and then creates a template for how the student would respond, just by the, the architecture of Seesaw, it's the same.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Evans. So moving on to grading and feedback, another one of our big questions that have, we have received. Grading will be traditional, and reporting of grades will resume for 2021 school year. As many of you know, in the spring, due to the uncertainty of what the situation was, we did not provide traditional grades, but we will be moving forward with that this year. Students will still take quizzes and tests remotely, and we are working on all of the ways that we can do that to ensure test security and things such as that. We will be looking for ways for students to participate in projects and performance-based assessments they always have, and that's a very important part of what our students do. And we know that parents are interested in seeing those assignments and assessments, so we will make sure that they are updated in Power School, and they can also see those as observers often in, in Seesaw and Canvas. And teachers will be expected to provide feedback, as always, daily feedback in a variety of formats. So our instructional day is going to be 300 minutes of a synchronous day for students that are live or in person. Then they'll have either 60 minutes or 90 minutes of asynchronous time at home. So that can be additional work that is assigned to them to complete when they are not in school. If they are hybrid or full virtual on the days that they are not in school, they would have comparable learning experiences for that amount of time, but how they spend their time and what the hours are would be up to them. So a real big piece for all of us has been the social-emotional learning. And you'll see here that the test courses sort of coined this reunite, renew, thrive. And that's what we're focused on. And I'm going to ask Ms. Kelly Kramer if she could please pop on here so that she can talk about some of that work briefly for you because we do feel that this is incredibly important as we reenter school.
Absolutely, thank you, Dr. Hoffman. Our task force spent a lot of time focusing on providing support and ideas for supporting our teachers when reuniting with our students. Some of those ideas include, you know, building relationships with our students. That's our number-one priority when we get back to school. Things like icebreakers, get-to-know-you surveys, video conferencing, things like that are going to be a priority when we enter school. Creating a safe, inviting learning environment, whether the learning environment's at home and that we're learning digitally, or whether the learning environment is in the classroom. A priority is creating that safe and learning environment. Establishing routines and creating a sense of belonging by implementing a morning meeting routine. We'll get started on that routine right away at the elementary level and then providing daily check-ins at the secondary level. Again, focus on connecting with our students and getting reunited. Thank you. We're going to also focus on renewing and re-establishing relationships and partnerships with family and parents. Some ways that we're going to do that is we'll be sharing a QCSD parent/family website, which will house a hub of resources to support wellness. We will, like Mr. Evans said, be providing clear and intentional frequent communication within our learning management systems. We will be helping families and learners at home establish routines to help manage. to help manage, you know, the day and the schedule and the work. And we will, like Mr. Evans said, be really organizing content via Canvas and CSO in a streamlined and predictable ways for families and students to easily navigate. And then ultimately, you know, the task force talked a lot about growth. And we ultimately want to put supports in place so that our students can thrive. And one way we're supporting that is by providing teachers with ongoing professional development throughout the school year. And ultimately, we want to get to a place where we're embedding social emotional learning into our classrooms, into our daily lesson plans, into our language that we use with our students, and get to a place where our instructional practices and structures, like student discussions, interactions, and teamwork, regardless of the environment, is ultimately supporting our students' growth in social emotional learning. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Kramer. As Ms. Kramer just spoke about, we are focusing our attention on professional learning opportunities for our staff. Many of the community may not know that our teachers actively participated in professional development every Friday. At a minimum, many of them participated in much more than that. But every staff member participated every Friday in robust, in-depth professional learning opportunities throughout the spring. And I think that that says a lot about our staff and their interest in growing as teachers. And we couldn't be more proud of that. In talking to them, one of the things that we determined was that some additional professional development over the summer may be a support. So Joe, if you could go on here, I'm going to ask Ms. Alexa Carter to just speak briefly about some of the PD that we've been offering. And I'll just celebrate by saying that we have been offering this PD just since the beginning of August. It is all voluntary and we've already had, you know, over 125 teachers sign in and to participate in this PD. And I just want to make sure that we celebrate that.
Thank you, Dr. Hoffman. We have collaborated to provide a variety of professional development opportunities for teachers to meet their needs.
Ms. Alexa Carter? Okay, I'll continue if she pops up. That's okay.
She's on. We just can't hear her at all.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we continue.
She's in the background. You can just barely hear.
Hear me now?
She's, I can hear you, but you're.
It's like the microphone volume is really low.
Yeah. It's almost like you're in a tunnel.
Go ahead, Dr. Hoffman.
Aaron, I'm going to go ahead and continue if that's okay. And we'll give credit to Aaron for organizing the PD slides, even though she isn't able to speak for us. So we've been doing what we call Panther Bites, which are just small synchronous and asynchronous learning opportunities for teachers over the summer that are completely voluntary. And as I said, we've had an incredible turnout so far, which is great, and some teacher leadership in those sessions as well, which I am incredibly proud of. We've also been working with some experts to bring in PD. We have a blended learning expert, Catlin Tucker, who is, you know, very well-known. I know that we have been the envy of many districts that we are able to secure her to come to speak to all of our secondary staff to help them with what blended learning can look like. And a lot of literacy PD for our elementary staff as well. As I mentioned, we have structured collaboration opportunities, coaching sessions with our district coaches. We have a robust Canvas course catalog that teachers can access at any time. A professional learning site that our office put together for teachers with a ton of resources. And we've been very fortunate that our local IU has held a number of synchronous and asynchronous sessions. And at last report, at my Java-like group, I was pleased to see that we have had many, many Quaker Town teachers participate in those IU-led workshops. So here's just some of our session topics. If you're interested in knowing what we're working on with our teachers, and these topics actually came out of topics in the spring where we asked teachers what they could most use support on from our office. Lastly, and yes, this is lastly, I'm at the end here, parent supports. We want to partner with you. We want you to be an active piece of the puzzle with us. And we know that some of you may need support. And so if you go to the next slide, Joe, we have created a parent website for student and family supports where we are adding content daily, which will be shared out, I believe, in a blog by Dr. Harner or otherwise put on the website. But we want to let you know that the purpose of creating this is to make sure that parents feel connected, that they have a place to go if they have questions or need help. Of course, your buildings are your first line of defense. If you have a question, you can always go to building principal. But we want to make sure that you have these supports here as well. So we hope that you will find those valuable. And if you have any further questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Or as I said, you can always reach out to me, email our phone, and I'm happy to chat. And now I'll turn my camera back on now that I can lean away from my microphone.
I had a quick question for you, Dr. Hoffman. Would it be possible to maybe set up like a parent boot camp with CSO and Canvas? Because I still do hear from some parents that they do have some troubles.
Already in the plans, Chris.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah, thanks for asking that. We have parent sessions ready to roll for both, well, actually for more than just how to access CSO and Canvas. But thank you for bringing that up. Those will be worth coming. And then they'll be recorded and available on our website as well as, right now, I think we're up to Mr. Evans' parenting. He's up to about 20 videos that he's made for parents to be able to access all sorts of information.
Any other questions for Lisa, Dr. Hoffman, and her team? As Caitlin has mentioned often about all the things that are going on behind the curtain, I would tell you our task force work has been phenomenal. The involvement of, you know, the scores of teachers, our administrative team, and the Office of Teaching and Learning for our instructional work moving forward has just been spectacular. Professional development opportunities are out there. And as I think your number was over 100 teachers already have participated and they're giving up their own time in the summertime to participate. And I know I talked to teachers almost every day of the week, the work week anyway, and sometimes on weekends now. And it's just been wonderful. So thank you, Dr. Hoffman, for that.
Dr. Harner?
Yes, ma'am.
I am so sorry to interrupt you. I was just told that we have Mr. Sueda here. I know a lot of people are asking us about tech. I don't know that it, I don't want to, I know he's not on the agenda and I don't want him to have to stay on the call until the end. So is there any way we could just give him a few minutes to share some information about what's been going on with tech?
That would be valuable. Thank you.
So, Joe, I think that you're going to have to.
He was already in here, so.
Jeff's already on. Thank you. You're muted, Jeff.
Sorry. Thank you, Caitlin and Quaker Town, for giving me this opportunity. Right now, where we stand at the Career and Tech Center for Upper Bucks, we had a meeting July 27th. I presented options. My first option was a face-to-face option five days a week. My second option was a hybrid option, which would bring in schools on separate days. The board has not voted on that. We have a meeting on the 20th. And the consensus from my board members is to continue that face-to-face model five days a week. We do have, I could accommodate the five days a week. I have eight of my 21 programs that will have the six-foot distancing. And I have the rest of them that would have the four and a half to six foot were feasible, you know, to be in a classroom. I also have alternate classrooms that my teachers can use if their lab is not large enough. But of course, we all know career and tech ed is totally different than a regular ed classroom. I have a lab area and a classroom. So some of my students may be, I'll give you one quick example. In the AM, we bring in our levels one and two students. So we bring our early beginning students in in the AM. So we might have level one students in the classroom and level two students working out in the lab area. And this is where we have our instructional assistants out there watching and making sure the students are safe out in the lab while our teachers are in the classroom teaching or vice versa. So we have a lot more flexibility to move our students around in and out of our classroom and in our lab area. So, you know, as of right now, and we know that these are a very fluid plan, that maybe by next Thursday, it may change another, you know, three, four, or five times. But as of right now, we are planning to do, you know, full face-to-face and go on five days a week. The Upper Bucks area or region, Upper Bucks County, Quaker Town, Penridge, Palisades, the COVID is very low at this point. And career and tech is a lot of hands-on, between 60 and 70% hands-on. I want to try to get my students in the classroom as often as I can before we are mandated to possibly go all virtual come December, January, when the flu season hits. I also have a 40% population of IEP and 504 students, you know, and I need those students in the class as often as I can. The option for the student, the parents that they're, you know, nervous with their students for health and safety, then we will do, my teachers will do individual virtual and send work home for those individual students. So that's where we're at. I'm going to try to, you know, we're going to keep plugging along. We're working with the three superintendents. You know, it's a very challenging time for all of us. And, you know, we're up, we're up very late at night and early in the morning and we're trying to do the right things for our students and our staff. That's the most important thing for me is to make sure we're all safe. So that's where we are with the Upper Bucks County Technical School.
So speaking of safe and, you know, you think, you know, possibly you're going to make the recommendation to the board for us to vote on that we go back five days. Talk about real quick the safety at the school, measures that you're taking, the way the building is going to be cleaned, as well as the supplies that are going to be available for the kids coming and going from the building.
Yeah, so we've been receiving all of our supplies now. They're becoming in droves, actually. We, last month, we went through and went through all of our AC systems, changed all of our filters, the HEPA filters. I know my board, when they get the bill, they're not going to be happy. But, you know, the HEPA filters will collect 99.9% of the germs in the building. Our ventilation, we're opening up our ventilation as well. Cleaning services, we just hired your cleaning service, actually SSC. And they started on Monday. And from what I can tell, the last four days, they're doing a phenomenal job. So I expect that to continue. It's a great, it's a lot better than my past custodial staff. And I will be having, I have a custodial on staff from 11 o'clock till 3:00 to help my maintenance staff clean between sessions. Because as you know, we have an AM session and PM session. So we're going to make sure that we get, you know, as many hands on deck cleaning the cafeteria area. The teachers will be responsible for cleaning, you know, their classroom as far as wiping desks down. Students will be taught how to wipe down the tools when they pick them up and use them. Because as you could imagine, you know, looking in the machine shop, we have, you know, 60 CNC machines. But there's also about 100 and so little tools that these students pick up every single day. So they're going to be conditioned how to wipe them down. Or they'll use rubber gloves. We do have COVID stations, we're calling them COVID stations, where as soon as a student walks into the classroom, they'll sanitize their hands. They'll be offered gloves. They'll be offered a mask if they didn't have, they should have their mask. They better have their mask on as they're walking through the school. And, you know, we'll have videos going playing throughout the whole day showing the, you know, the proper way to cleanse, proper way to wash your hands, so on and so forth. So, you know, we're excited. Our teachers are phenomenal. They want, they want, they want to be there. They want to come in. They want to work with their kids. And, you know, the kids are excited to get back and start touching the tools and equipment. We also have a lot of projects outside. As you know, we have a animal tech program. We're going to have our carpentry students, our construction students, working on the little barns out there. So we have some projects. We're going to try to do a lot of projects outside. And some of the municipalities have been reaching out that have some projects for our kids to do as well. I have over 46 on co-op right now. And as you all know, we now know who the essential workers are during this COVID. And, you know, it's 98% of my students and programs that are essential. So my students have been working from co-op through this whole pandemic. And they're doing a phenomenal job. So, you know, we're excited and, you know, we want to just get in there and get it going and try to get as much as we can in there in case, you know, it spikes again.
So thank you very much for calling in. And I just want to remind everybody else on the call who is listening and who are interested in tech school, make sure to send us any emails with your questions. And again, it's still a work in progress. So if your question wasn't answered, obviously, we haven't made any final decisions yet. Thank you, Ms. Mitchell, President Mitchell, for letting me say that. And Jeff, thanks for calling in. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
We have a couple of questions for Jeff and Dr. Harner. Probably both would get these.
Sorry, Jeff. Tried to let you go early, man.
Chris, just keep it brief, just since we have to get through the rest.
It's going to be. So we did profess that we are going to provide transportation to the tech school at their schedule, correct, Dr. Harner?
We did profess that. This is the third schedule that I've heard or fourth schedule in this week. So we'll have to see how that all looks.
Okay, and then.
One thing is their schedule is different. It aligns precisely with Palisades School District. They're in five days a week. Penridge is in alternating days, so, and we don't know where we're at until hopefully we'll know tonight. So as soon as we get the clear direction from the board, we'll be able to figure out what we'll be able to support.
And if our students, this will be for Mr. Sueda, if our students would be dismissing at 1:00 PM and we would not be providing lunch to them, would it be possible, since they would be at the tech school until later in the afternoon, students, that we may have to utilize food services at the tech school? Would that be something that could be set up since we haven't done that in the past?
That will be a challenge. Because currently, we, Quaker Town students do not have lunch at the Career and Tech Center. We don't serve Quaker Town lunch. And from my numbers for the two, for AM and PM, with Penridge and Palisades, I'll have 408 students, 202 in the morning from Palisades and Penridge, and 206 in the afternoon to serve lunches. So I have room for 117 in my cafeteria. And I have two rooms set up to accommodate the other 80-some students or 60-some students. So to add another 350, I'll tell you exactly what the numbers are for Quaker Town.
Jeff has done a phenomenal job of working with the three districts. Our enrollment at the tech school is up 100, probably 20% this year.
Yeah, we're up about 150 students. So we're up in the 850 student mark.
Which is maxing out your facility.
Yeah, we're very, very close and.
Perfect time to do that, by the way.
It's a double-edged sword because we would, I mean, we're happy where we're at, but then this hit us. So.
So we may have to consider what we would be able to do to provide lunches for our tech school kids if they were leaving our building, if they weren't in hybrid at the time or something like that. It's just, why I asked you that is it's just something we need to further consider in our planning moving forward.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the Quaker Town students usually arrive in the morning. They arrive at 10:45. Oh, no, they're. They arrive at ten forty-five, or no, they're dismissed at ten forty-five, and then they arrive at eleven twenty-eight. But when they arrive at eleven twenty-eight, they've already had lunch at the, at Quaker Town. So, then when they come into our school at eleven twenty-eight, we have them come into the cafeteria, and then we dismiss them from the cafeteria to their classroom at eleven thirty-five. So, you know, your schedule, the schedule would be the same for arrival, and dismissal time, since Quaker Town will be dismissing at one, usually our students from Quaker Town are dismissed from our school at approximately one fifty, or one fifty-two. So, they have, they'd have another fifty minutes, or maybe an hour more time in the lab area. But, I don't know how that would work. And like I said, we'll...
We'll figure that out.
And so, now, we'll have to try to get, nail those, those numbers down and those times down.
Actually, I want to bring up one other thing. I'm glad Chris asked you a question, the start date for the tech school. Can you address that for everybody in public right now, so that there's no question?
Yeah, so we, we're going to, our start date is going to be September second, which is a Wednesday. And, you know, that, it's aligned with Penridge. So, September second instead of August thirty-first. That was, you know, that's the only major cha- the change that the board did not hear in July. July was the August thirty-first change. We're going to give it a couple of more days for instructors to prepare, and we'll be starting September second.
One thing, Jeff, you didn't talk about that's new for the tech school, for Chris's question, transportation. Well, the tech school is allowing students to drive to school if they have a license, and priorities with seniors first, juniors second, and you have a hundred and eighty spots per session, correct?
Yes, sir. We, so, we have a hundred and eighty spots. They're going to park in the back, secured. We're going to, we're going to, you know, it's going to be first come, first served. We're going to put out the parking permits and policy out online. We're going to make sure all of our parents know it. So, they'll have from the twenty-fifth to the twenty-seventh, between eight AM and four PM, to fill out the application, put in, make sure that we have their license, their insurance and registration. And we're going to go with our co-op students, who'll have first choice, because they're the students that drive to work. And then our seniors, and then our juniors. And from what I understand, sophomores usually don't drive to the, I know they don't drive to Palisades, and I don't think they're allowed to drive to Penridge. But I think between the co-op students and seniors and juniors, those a hundred and eighty spots are going to get filled up pretty quickly.
And will we allow parent drop-offs as well? I know that hasn't been done in the past, but...
Yeah, we'll allow parent drop-off, and it'll be at a strict time, because I can't have kids walking in and out of building all different times. So, they'll have a timeframe to get their student to the building. And there'll be a certain entrance where those parents will be dropping those students off to enter into the building.
All right, well, we really appreciate it that you're taking time out to give us this information. I can tell you that a lot of families have really been asking questions about tech. And we know the situation is fluid. So, I would just say, for anyone watching, stay tuned to your next board meeting, where you guys are going to continue to have the conversation.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harner, for allowing that, and I'll hand it back over to you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good question for Mark, that, maybe I missed it, but we're starting after them. What's the game plan with our students?
Our students will start on the second with them, our tech school students, and we'll transport them then for those days. And then, at the end of the year, they won't have the sessions to go to, because they'll be completed sooner, so they'll only have a half a day with high school. The way the tech school works, when two districts do something together, we try to do it all together. I couldn't, was not persuasive enough to get them, or maybe they weren't persuasive enough with their boards to have a two-week delay like we did, which gives us more planning time. And so, when two districts make a decision, that's the way that it goes out there. Even though Palisades, we have, well, I think three hundred and seventy-five students, and Palisades may have only seventy. They, it's, everyone gets one, one vote.
Yeah, so, to, to jump in there, Quaker Town, you guys have three hundred and eighty-five students.
I was close.
Palisade, or Penridge has three hundred and twenty-seven, and Palisades has eighty-one for this, for this coming twenty, twenty-one school year.
And again, we're up a hundred and fifty students, and I think that's right at capacity. So, that's pretty darn awesome, getting our, using our, that wonderful facility out there. Next presentation, I'm going to get into that, because the last one is probably the one that most people are on the, attending the board meetings evening they're interested in. Next one's on subs. It is a decision presentation, a decision brief, because at the end of it, I'm going to ask you to support, recommendation. But basically, I think you will, because it's something that percolated up from our last meeting from Mr. McCucci. So, Mr. Shock, you're up.
All right. I will try to move through this relatively quickly. As I know, the next presentation is what our six hundred participants have probably tuned in for. So, if you want to go to the next slide, Joe. I understand this did come up at the last board meeting, so I'm just going to briefly talk about some of the challenges that we are faced with this upcoming year, some of our strategies to combat that. We'll take a quick look at some of our data, and then we have a few considerations, recommendations for the board at the end. Obviously, over the last couple of years, I believe everybody is aware there is a national sub shortage, which we are seeing in Pennsylvania locally. So, we do expect that to be even more challenging this upcoming year due to what we expect to be more call-outs on a daily basis for safety reasons. Go ahead, Joe. I believe most of you have heard about the Family First Coronavirus Response Act. One of the provisions of that allows individuals who have students and their district or childcare provider, whatever it might be, either is closed or goes virtual, and they now do not have childcare, they are entitled to a paid leave of absence for twelve weeks. So, we did some analysis of our teachers to see how many of our teachers qualify, and we believe about fifty-five percent of our teachers would qualify for that provision. And you can see the breakdown there by, by level. The note at the bottom's cut off a little bit, but there has been some conversations that if we, for whatever reason, at any point, did go virtual, would that change? And our stance has been no, wouldn't, because the expectation would be, even if we're virtual, our staff would still be coming into their classrooms to conduct their class virtually. Go ahead, Joe. So, we're lucky so far. We really haven't seen many staff requests to date. We've only had three officially. We've had another twelve staff members inquire. And the other part of this is what we call reasonable accommodations. For medical reasons, staff have requested certain accommodations be made to allow them to come in and complete the essential duties of their job. So, when we receive those requests, they go to Anita Caseman, our benefits manager. She reviews them with myself, Barb Phillips, our human resources manager, and Nancy Edwards, as well as the other leave requests. And then we make decisions on what we can and can't do, what we will or will not approve, and then communicate that back out to staff. So, we did our first round, actually, the beginning of this week, and those communications have started to go out to staff today. Go ahead, Joe. So, here's some data. I'm not going to go through it all. I'm really just going to talk about the two data points that are circled. So, Barb Phillips, who put a lot of this presentation together, took a look at our data from last year, and on a, on an average day, we have about thirty-one teachers who require a sub call-out. And then you'll notice the other circle, we have about seven and a half, round up eight, that go unfilled. That's across the entire district. So, you'll see, I think it's covered maybe by, maybe it's just on my screen here, but we fill about fourteen of those, which is our daily per diem subs, which you'll see at the bottom, we have about ninety. They're not exclusive to Quaker Town. We do use ESS, so they can sub for any district that they want, where ESS is the provider. And then we fill the other nine, ten absences using our building-based subs. You'll hear building-based subs, building sub, permanent per diem sub. It's all the same thing. Go ahead, Joe. So, when we do have unfilled absences, where we can't get a sub to cover, our principals go through a bunch of strategies, and you'll see those listed here. You know, obviously, we start out with the per diem sub. Then we look at our building subs, we'll start to pull aides that have a teaching certificate or an emergency certification. We do start to pull elementary specialists. You'll see, you know, the instructional coaches, interventional specialists. One of the strategies that we're not really able to use this upcoming year is we also can pull staff from their prep period. They do receive payment after they've done that a few times from the district. The reason that's not a strategy that we can really utilize this year is because the prep period, in many cases, is before the students actually arrive. And then, obviously, a last resort, we would start pulling our specialists, specifically at the elementary level. Now, in a typical year, we never exhaust all of these strategies, because the last strategy that principals could always rely on is combining classes. Unfortunately, with COVID, social distancing, that's simply not a strategy that we can use this year. In addition to that, our common spaces are being used, in many cases, as overflow classroom spaces. So, there really wouldn't be anywhere for our principals to combine classes either way. Go ahead, Joe. So, this is just some information. I know at the last board meeting, I believe, Mr. McCucci brought up the building-based sub model. We do have ten FTEs, or ten building, or we have eleven, but two of them are part-time building subs already, and you can see how that's broken out across our schools at the elementary level. Mr. Schmucker actually coordinates that on a daily basis. So, he communicates with the other principals and sends our five elementary building-based subs to where they're most needed across the five elementary schools. And again, we do have ninety per diem subs that are active on our, within our district. But again, it's not exclusive to Quaker Town. They might sub in, in other districts as well, Palisades, Penridge, whatever, whatever that might be. Go ahead, Joe. So, this is just a little bit of a breakdown. The more notice we get, obviously, from teachers, the higher the likelihood is that that absence will, will result in a substitute teacher. You can see our numbers dropped significantly as we approached the day of. And then that after start of absence, that's a little misleading. It says ninety-eight percent. That's where most of the building-based subs are put. So, I would just, you know, as you're, as you're looking at this table here, really just go down to the zero to twelve hours notice. And again, this is where the building-based model really helps us out. So, just some of the strategies. We are emergency certifying our regular education aides that have a bachelor's degree. You do have to have a bachelor's degree in Pennsylvania to be eligible to be emergency certified. You go through a two-day training. That's through ESS and through the IU, that they would do that. And then the district applies to the state to get them an emergency certification. It's not very expensive. It's only five dollars, and the district does cover that. And then, that's another resource that the principals have to pull. Now, they are pulling them from whatever their other duty would be. So, it's, it's not a perfect solution, but when we need an individual in front of a classroom, it is a strategy that we use. And then, obviously, Barb Phillips and the Human Resources Department is working with ESS, and we're advertising, you know, constantly for substitute teachers. You know, we ask everybody, all the principals and their newsletters, to, at least every once in a while, communicate that we do need subs and how you can become a substitute teacher. I know we've worked with the teachers' union. They advertise that on behalf of the district. So, we are trying to exhaust all of our advertisement avenues to try to entice individuals who might be interested in coming onboard with Quaker Town as a substitute teacher. This is just, we're not going to play it, but just a short promotional video, just an example of one of the things our human resources manager, Barb Phillips, put together. And again, we've put this everywhere we possibly can to, again, try to highlight the benefits of being a substitute teacher, especially within Quaker Town Community School District. So, some of the decision points that we might be faced with this school year, as I stated earlier, we do expect there to be more absences on a daily basis. Again, precaution, you know, we are asking staff, if you're not feeling well, you're not sure, please be safe, call out sick that morning. So, again, on average, we have about thirty-one absences per day. And you'll notice that blue arrow. If we hired an additional eight building-based subs, this isn't perfect math, but we think that that would cover our typical day. Again, every day's a little different. Fridays, we see a little bit of a higher absence rate. Mondays may be a little bit lower, Tuesdays a little bit lower. So, as you work your way down, you'll see there's the orange. In a typical school year, we do have a few days throughout the year where we do see some spikes, and we get up to almost sixty absences, or seventeen percent of our staff. Now, we're able to manage that, but I would say barely. So, principals have to exhaust all of the resources they have to be able to cover all those unfilled absences throughout the school district. The next line down, the red, in our opinion, based on what we know, when we get up to about sixty, if we got up to seventy, we would feel that at that point, it is not safe to open up school that day. We simply have too many classrooms where we just don't have a teacher or an adult that is certified to fill that classroom. And there is, we've exhausted every resource we have. And Dr. Harner would have to, as the, obviously, the superintendent, make a decision as soon as we have that information available to us on what we need to do, whether that's that day's virtual, or that's just the school's closed that year, whatever it might be. Or that day, I'm sorry, not the year.
Zach, just back up one second, please.
Joe, can you back up?
What's really important to understand on this slide over there, where you see the fifty-three and sixty and whatnot, under those numbers are under a non-COVID, except for the additional eight building-based subs. The teachers traditionally, during their planning period, jump, do their best to cover these classes. Or they combine the students and move them into another class. Understand, this year, we can't, we don't have the luxury of combining classes. We may have the opportunity, if there's a free space, depending upon your decision in the next present, after the next presentation. If we have cafeterias available or libraries available, because right now, some of those spaces are, this year, coming year, we were planning to use them as classroom spaces, cafeterias and libraries and whatnot outside the high school that we've used as a classroom for years. Anyway, that's really important. These numbers that Zach talked about, like, we've had sixteen in the past, that's like on a Penn State bowl game kind of day. But we can't combine now. Thank you, Zach.
We also have questions about our pay structure. So, we did do some analysis. It's not quite as easy as it used to be to do this analysis, because it is very competitive. Districts aren't as forthcoming as they used to be with what they pay. But we do pay a hundred and five dollars per day for, per day for a per diem sub. The county average is a hundred and three. And we looked at just the districts that we think we'd probably compete with the most, and what the average was for them, and it's a hundred and nine dollars for that, per day. And that's just for a per diem sub. Each district does things a little differently. There might be one where they pay a little bit higher for special ed versus regular ed, but we just tried to look at what the average was. And we do pay long-term per diem subs, a hundred and forty dollars a day. The building subs, a hundred and twenty. And if any of our retired teachers would like to come back and sub, we do bump it up from a hundred and five to a hundred and fifteen dollars per day. And just backing up real quick, that was increased last year. We did recommend to the school board, we did pay ninety-five dollars. We had a tiered structure. We got rid of that and did bump it up last year to a hundred and five dollars per day. So, that was a new rate for us. So, just some cost analysis. As I stated earlier, the number, if we were going to hire additional building-based subs, we arrived at was eight, because of the average unfilled per day that we typically see in a typical year. Costing that out, that would be about two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars per year in addition to what we budgeted for in our per diem substitute budget line. And I know there was some talk about, or some confusion about Peasars, not Peasars, since we go with sorts for teachers or ESS. We don't, there is no Peasars cost. They do have a service fee, because... service fee because they, they have to purchase the software. They have a full staff that help coordinate and staff all those per diem subs, but it is slightly lower than, than what the Peasars rate would be. And we recently got some questions on sub, sub nurses. We do that a little differently. We do source that in-house. We do have seven on our payroll right now. All seven don't obviously accept jobs every single day. Our sub, our nurse coordinator or lead nurse actually coordinates coverage every day, either within our regular nursing staff or with the addition of the, the, the per diem subs. We typically like to hire and our nurses like that we hire our ends as substitutes. We have expanded that recently to LPNs because we, we do find it difficult to have enough substitute nurses on, on staff. Last year, we did make a recommendation and the board approved it to increase that pay rate. They used to follow the same pay rate as a substitute teacher, $105 a day. So if you look at about a seven hour day, about $15 an hour, it was increased to $20 an hour. Looking at the county, the average is about $18 an hour, so we are slightly above that. That doesn't include any district that uses a third party, which I'll get to in a minute. So again, it, it is very difficult. We, we are certainly not competitive for compared to hospitals or doctors' offices. It's not meant to be a career job. It's just if there are nurses in the area that would like to pick up some extra work, what we're able to afford is the $20 an hour. So we do have a recommendation for the board to consider. And I can bring this back the next board meeting. We are working on getting proposals from multiple companies. And that's to engage with a third-party contractor like a Biata or, or GHR. This would be a last resort, is very expensive, so this would go through Janet Plone's office if we needed to bring in a, a third-party contractor on a per diem rate or a per, on a per diem basis, the rate for those can be expensive. We've seen them around the $65 an hour rate. Again, we are working on getting some proposals. Hopefully we can get some proposals where that number is not quite that high. So again, would, the recommendations, just to summarize, would be if the board is interested bringing on an additional eight building subs. There's no formal motion for that because we already have that contractual rate with ESS. However, I would bring it back at the next board meeting, or it can be a motion tonight. It would be an add-on. It's not on the agenda really for the cost because it is not budgeted for, it's a non-budgeted number. Then the other recommendation would be engaging with a third-party contractor. Obviously, I don't know what the cost would be for that because it would be entirely contingent on how many times we have to bring them in. And, and when we get those proposals, what the final hourly rate would be for them. So that is the, the end of the, the sub presentation.
I did have a quick question though, too, for the these subs adding at $235,375. If the state would come back and mandate us to go full virtual, would, would they be then locked in to, for payroll for the rest of the year?
No, because they would be ESS or Source for Teachers employees. We reserve the right at any time to discontinue any per diem sub with them.
Any other questions?
Well, I think from, from a nursing standpoint, your, your, your market range is, I mean, not even existent.
Wouldn't it work for that much, Keith?
I'm just saying, it's a very low, especially if you want RN level staff. I, I, I do have a couple of questions regarding the strategy. One is, there's a lot of really good retired nurses that, that still hold their RN license that are super experienced and maybe willing to work for a little bit more money. And so my question is, is there an opportunity for us to sort of join ventures with maybe a healthcare institution and see if there's any retirees looking for a little side work and would be interested? I would, I would say you would have to increase your pay rate, though, to get them to, to come and work for you. So one, is there any, anything that we can do where we can leverage a relationship? And see if we can reach out to retired nurses that just retired within the last year and see if they'd be interested in helping out per day here and a day there, just to bulk up our staff as opposed to lock into a contract with a group that you're going to pay almost triple what you're, you're paying your average nurse today. I don't know why they would, wouldn't all even go work for them. So around the strategy, I think there should be some more, some more thought, maybe innovation. That's the first thing. And, and you can actually think about with the technology we have today, could you do some telemedicine in the school? And we have these Zoom capabilities, so you're sharing nurses, but maybe getting a little bit more, you know, maybe they don't need to be somewhere, but you can use telemedicine, just something to think about. And along those lines, again, locking in with a health partner that may be interested in doing that. And as far as the sub position is concerned, look, if you're, if it's a supply and demand issue and the supply is lower and the demand is higher, it requires us to sort of make an adjustment and get competitive so that people want to work here first and not go anywhere else. And so if that's looking at putting a couple more bucks on the, on the table, I think that may, that may be something that we should explore. Just my two cents.
And, and just to touch on your first point, most of, I believe most of our sub nurses are exactly what you said, and we rely on our, our actual nurses that we have to, to engage in sort of their network and their colleagues, and, and they, they do that already. It's not a formal relationship with a, with a hospital, but our, I don't know if Janet wants to comment a little bit on it. She oversees and supervises and meets with the nurses on a monthly basis, but they're all out there recruiting, trying to bring nurses on, onboard.
Yeah, I'm saying a little bit more formal process. I don't want, we, we don't have to get into it. I mean, for, in the interest of time, we can move on. It was just a couple of things I was thinking about from a strategy standpoint, could you, you know, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But I think we really need to examine increasing our, our pay a little bit to make ourselves sort of stand out so that people want to come work for us. Is it also possible to find people who maybe don't have the, the RN license? Maybe a nurse's assistant who could sort of triage the the other things? Is that possible? I'm not sure. I'd be concerned with that. I mean, you know, you're talking about the difference between a licensed professional and a licensed professional, and I think that you know, my concern would be, again, you know, there, there are excellent nursing assistants out there. But you know, when you're, when you're really looking at med administration, med distribution, things along those lines, you really need a licensed professional to do that.
So a CNA probably wouldn't, wouldn't qualify.
I, I don't believe so, but I, I'll have to follow up with Janet to bring that.
They're not, they're not licensed.
Right, a CNA could not give medication.
I think it's all really good points. Oh, go ahead, Dave.
No, I was going to say, Keith, I think it's a really good idea, the innovation word, I think, really has to widen that, increase our wages a few bucks, and this might not be such a hurdle for us.
Yeah, I think, given that we know that subs and nurses are going to be a critical component of keeping our schools safely open, that I, as a board member, I would be willing to invest more to ensure that we have that staffing.
Do we want to vote on this now, then, Dr. Harner? Is that how you wanted us to do that?
What's the most expeditious way of getting this done?
I recommend we, since we have a lot more questions about the nursing issue and Zach has more information that he's gathering as far as the Biata option and things like that. Can we vote on the subs, the substitute teacher part tonight? And then he asked me to come back for the nurses for next time?
I would agree with that because I don't have any recommendations on increasing the rate until we do some more analysis. Again, we did just increase it last year and I know it's not competitive compared to hospitals. It, it is very competitive in, in the educational you know, setting, but, but that's certainly something I can come back with some, some thoughts on for the next board meeting.
Finance meeting.
Okay, sounds good. All right, let's move on.
So now, doesn't somebody want to make a motion to pass the teacher one?
Well, I think we're going to do that when we get to that agenda or do
On the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, so I believe you would do that.
Right, right now, I just need a motion from somebody for that to support the, the figure. Could you put your figure back up there, Zach?
Joe has it, but it's 235,000 for the eight additional building subs.
I will make a motion to add that 235,375 for eight additional building or, yeah, eight additional building subs.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Hold on one second. Who, the motion was to hire eight additional building subs at a cost of 235,375, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Approximately, just so it's
Approximately. Who made the motion, please?
Chris Spear.
And who seconded?
Dave.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
He's going to give you chest pain.
Hey, as long as you don't tell me later, we're above the budget.
Give you a little heart attack here.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. I had that.
All right, all those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much, Caitlin. Thank you. The, the last part of the superintendent's report is going to be provided by Nancy Ann Edwards. Nancy, you're up.
Okay, actually, I'm just going to do the beginning of it, and then our principals are going to out their, their data. Joe is bringing up the, the presentation. And this presentation contains the analysis that we did on each building, and our, our principals have gone classroom by classroom. They actually finished up work this afternoon. Mrs. Mitchell and Mr. Spear went out and were very helpful in identifying some additional opportunities we had to meet our social distancing requirements, but also accommodate more students. And so they were able to revise that data. And so the presentation that we have tonight includes all of that revised data. Go ahead, Joe. Okay, one thing that I wanted to note is that earlier this week, we did get additional PDE guidance that divides or assigns counties a rating based on the level of community transmission and the incidence rate. And currently Bucks County and all of the surrounding counties, Lehigh, Montgomery are rated moderate under this system. I don't think that drives any changes in our health and safety plan at this point because we're still more than four weeks away from the date that we would open school. And we'll be able to see if, if we trend lower and end up in the, the low level, or if we stay moderate, but there's plenty of time to adapt to that, our level of planning, I think, and the fact that we're planning for many different eventualities will allow us to pivot quickly if needed as we get closer to our start date. And that's sort of what I just said, so we can keep going. Okay, a lot of parents have been asking about the times, and we also heard feedback from elementary parents in particular, that moving the start and the end of the day to do the shortened day was really problematic. So these are the times that we're, we're working with in terms of the live, the time that students will be in school live. And at the elementary level, that's nine to two, and at the secondary level, that would be eight to one. We are optimistic based on our initial conversations with Levy Bus and the gifted, very gifted Al Rosenberger that we, we are optimistic that we will be able to provide transportation in this two-tier model. One note that I wanted to make is, is at the secondary level, lunch will be a grab and go at dismissal. We will put a snack break in the day. But at dismissal, students will, will grab lunch and leave with it, which solves a whole host of problems within the school day. And the other thing is at the secondary level, hybrid students will be assigned geographically by sending area. So in order for the transportation to work, we need to limit the geographic area that we need to do bus routes each day, and so so students will be assigned to A-Day or B-Day or Blue Day or White Day, whatever we end up calling them based on sending area. That should also facilitate places where neighbors are helping, you know, one parent might be helping another parent down the street on days when a hybrid student is virtual or things like that, so. So that's how that will happen, and all of that work is, is well underway. There are impacts to instruction. I know that many of us who have presented and talked about these issues like to, to make sure that we are being transparent with people about what the day will be like because there will be many disruptions to the flow of the routines, especially at the elementary level. Things like getting kids together on the carpet or having kids get together in groups or the flexible seating that some teachers have in their classrooms. But you know, all of those things will be different. There'll be a lot more seat time. Classrooms will look very traditional with desks in rows. Teachers will be limited in their movement area to a certain degree in order to maintain social distancing, so while I know that everyone will make heroic efforts to make this the best experience possible for our students, it is not going to be school as students are accustomed to it. So there are a lot of, a lot of impacts on instruction. Okay. Some things apply to all buildings. When we get to the individual building reports, they have certain notes that apply just to their building, but there's some things that apply to all of them. One example, students who haven't registered yet are included in the live numbers, meaning they're already a registered Quaker Town student, but they did not complete the registration process. And the reason for this is if we're trying to do capacity planning and make sure that we have capacity to, to do certain things, we have to account for that worst-case scenario, the maximum number of students that could attend. Some of those students probably have withdrawn and haven't notified us yet. Some of the students may not be returning to school for other reasons. So we expect like some shrinkage in those numbers, meaning that what we're seeing tonight in terms of distances and everything should be our worst case. One thing that probably will need to happen moving forward is that new students that enroll in the school district going forward that are not already enrolled will only be able to enroll for live instruction if there is space available. So what we, what we won't do is if we have rooms that meet the social distancing requirements and two more students want to register, those students may need to, to be virtual in terms of their instructional model until such time as we have a space in the live classroom. IEP and English Language Learner students are scheduled for live instruction every day that it occurs in the building if they selected live. So if they selected live, that's either, if it's hybrid, well, they selected, we are honoring requests for hybrid and virtual. So however many days live instruction ends up being able to be offered in a particular building, we've assigned all IEP and EL students to receive that instruction each day. Where classes were too large, there's too many requests for live instruction to maintain social distancing. Those classrooms were often relocated to larger spaces within the, the building, and you'll hear the principals talk about that. And one other factor in the capacity analysis is that we often have more than one adult in the classroom at the same time. And so in the planning of how many desks can fit and maintain social distancing, we also have had to account for where a co-teacher or one or more aides might be in the classroom supporting students. So that was another factor. At elementary, each of the principals will explain a little more the context needed to understand their numbers, but the distances shown in their charts are the minimum distance for any dimension. Meaning if there's, if the dimension, if the distancing number is four and a half feet, Meaning if there's, if the dimension, if the distancing number is four and a half feet, it could mean that the students are six feet apart side to side, but four and a half feet apart front to back. So it is, those numbers are not like a bubble around the student, but they represent the minimum distance in any direction that a student would be closer to each other. All buildings, all elementary buildings, it's going, lunch is going to be interesting. So probably students will be spread out using common areas like hallways or moving to the edges of the room. But lunch, especially when the weather is bad so that we can't use outdoor spaces, you know, will be a, a challenge. Another note that applies in every building, we weren't able to complete our full-day kindergarten assessment process due to the shutdown. So we have put some students in those classes based on the initial screening, but we are going to complete those assessments in September. And then additional students that qualify will move to the full-day classroom. So where we have half-day numbers that, that look a little tight, we anticipate some relief from that when the additional students are identified that would be moving to the full-day kindergarten class. And again, co-teachers and aides are often in the classroom supporting students. And so that sometimes displaces the, you know, the maximum number of desks that could, could fit. Okay. Now each principal is going to go through and explain their data and their notes. And I think I would suggest that if there are questions about individual buildings, that I would ask each principal to pause after they explain their notes and just see if there are any clarifying questions that, that the board members wish to ask about that particular building. If it's an overall question, then we could certainly answer it at the end. But if you have a specific question to that building, it might be the most useful to, to ask that question when that principal finishes their portion. So first I'd like to turn it over to Scott Godchalk from Nighting, who has had the additional challenge of planning for a building, but he can't be in yet.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Good evening, everybody. Here you can see, well, I'm the first of eight principals to go. We will try to be brief in our presentations. Like Ms. Edwards was saying, we do have the wonderful opportunity at Nighting to, we're highly anticipating our move back into the new Nighting. I think everybody knows we are the finishing, at just about at the finish line of the massive reconstruction and addition project at Nighting. We have, that construction project has afforded us the gift of space. And during COVID-19, that is, that is, you know, we're very fortunate for that. So as you, as we talk through these, some of these numbers, I will reference some of those spaces at the new Nighting. You can see the, the summary of the numbers here. I'm certainly not going to read everything to you. I will draw your attention to a few of these columns. We've been living these numbers every day, but I know this is the first time that you've probably been seeing some of these. Obviously you can see the total enrollment at each grade level. You can see the breakdown of each selection of the instructional model. I'll draw your attention to the total class size, but because please remember that each teacher is responsible for all of the students on their class roster, including the virtual students and the hybrid students. So you will see all of those numbers in the total class size. And you will also see how many students are actually live in front of them on a given day. That takes into account the hybrid students. You will see in, in the columns here for Nighting, that in the fit column, meaning do the students fit the social distancing, each, each grade level does say yes. And you will see that for the most part, we are at the six-foot distancing mark at Nighting. There are some asterisks here. In particular, you'll see grade one, but actually we're okay there. I'm going to explain that in some more detail as we get on to the next slide. Because there are a couple of grade levels where we did have to make some, one grade level in particular that we had to make a significant change. Here you can see just as a summary, what we had to do at Nighting, again, we're in a unique position. We couldn't go into the school and set up classrooms. We do not have access to the building yet. So I was fortunate enough to work with our furniture vendor. That's Corporate Interiors. They were our furniture vendor. They have an amazing software package that we were, we worked with them as we were going through the selection process for our desks and chairs. The teachers worked with the, their company as well. And they have a great software package that puts the desks and they can measure things out. So we had the idea to contact them again to help us with this exercise since we can't do it normally. So Joe, can you go ahead two slides? Because I'll show that quick picture. Right here you can see a digital rendering of a typical third-grade classroom. So we kind of had to do this digitally. And I feel confident that it is an accurate representation of, of what it would really look like. So this is a, a third-grade classroom with six-foot distancing. So some of the other schools, as the, as the principals are presenting, you will see actual photos. Unfortunately, we couldn't do that, but I did feel confident in the numbers with these digital representations. So Joe, if you could go back two slides, please. So you can see at each of the, in each of the renderings that we had, we were able to achieve six-foot distancing, that side to side and front to back. There's a little bit of, I, I will acknowledge, I'll say guesswork, but it's calculated guesswork because you know, it's not from the desk. The students are sitting behind the desk. We went through a lot of exercises together, the principals, just to understand about where students are sitting. Next slide, please. One of the grade levels that I'd like to highlight is third grade. When we looked at their class sizes, they were each over 15 students. It does depend on the day with the hybrid students. That's why I say it depends, but there were 15 or 16 students. In order to get to a six-foot distancing minimum, we did have to move those grade levels. So I did move all three of the third-grade classrooms to the primary wing. Again, we do have the gift, gift of space right now. I think the board members do know that the school was built to house about 600 students at Nighting. For this school year, we're not at that, that upper limit yet. We will have the redistricting committee this school year so that next year we will be at full capacity, but there is some extra space as of right now. So there were classrooms open in the primary wing and they were much larger than the new classrooms in the new wing. So they, by moving them to the primary wing, we were able to give them at least 100 square feet more per classroom. And that brought them back to six-foot distancing. So that was third grade. First grade and fourth grade are at their limits of six-foot distancing. If we do have additional students at those grade levels, we will most likely be moving them. That would be to the art room or to the library or to the gymnasium and the cafeteria. Not ideal spaces for an elementary classroom, but we are placing safety first. And if we have that space available to us, we're going to do what we can to, to ensure that, that space. That is the end of the presentation for Nighting. There's the picture again. Are there any questions? Nighting specific questions?
I did notice on your picture here, it, it does look like, I mean, it's, it's hard to zoom in, but it does look like that. It's measuring edge to edge at six feet?
Yes, it is.
There. So I guess the exercise we were going through today and what we worked out with Dr. Damsker in the classes before was more center of desk to center of desk because that's more mouth to mouth. And that, that's what you measure, you know, head to head, face to face, person to person when you're doing that. So what we had found was six-foot edge to edge. Now, you're, the picture of your desks looks a little different than the others, but usually translated to about eight-foot mouth-to-mouth separation. So even at the three-foot distancing that some of the classrooms did lay out, that ended up translating to five-foot of, of mouth-to-mouth distancing. So it, it would be, now, you're not seeing any problems with space anyway, but it, for the, for argument's sake, that if you say would take on some other students from other schools if they volunteered to come, would you be, would it be possible, do you think, to, to possibly absorb some of those to help relieve some of the overcrowding in the other schools, absent a redistricting committee, but maybe strictly voluntary one?
Well, I'll, I'll address some of your comments there. Yeah, I do understand the, the edge-to-edge comment and, and where we're measuring from. A caution there is, you know, yes, if we do go from center of body line to center of body line, I, I would ask for your understanding that I have not attended any classroom, elementary classroom spaces where students stay, you know, perfectly there. They're, they're moving, you know. So there, there is a little bit of a bubble there. We were comfortable looking at that, that six-foot spacing and maintaining that, that distance that the, that the CDC and WHO recommended. But we were looking at everybody's recommendations for that distancing. So yes, you are seeing a six-foot, a six-foot edge-to-edge space, knowing that students are going to be moving at their desks. Now, sorry, your next question, oh, you were talking about, you know, with the space that we have at Nighting, could we absorb students from other schools? That's certainly something that we were, we're going to talk about administratively. Some of the other schools don't have the gift of space that the United Building has, and they are, they're, they're struggling with, with having students distance at this six-foot space. It's certainly something that I'm open for and, you know, we're, we're going to have those discussions.
I, I think Chris's point is you're at access of six foot and you do have the luxury of space.
Well, one thing I do want to point out is, and I know that everyone is doing their best job to really try to space these students, but we have to have consistency across buildings. And I think what we have been seeing between Chris and I going into some of these buildings is the task that we asked for was the spacing between six feet between students and not desk. And so some buildings, I think, tried to accommodate that and some didn't. So we have to have consistency. And I do respect and understand fully the comment about, you know, kids are not going to stay in one particular place. I totally understand that. But we also have to understand, and we keep on quoting the CDC guidance, but what we have to understand is the context of the CDC guidance, which is that we cannot get hung up on six feet if we are masking. So if we understand the threat of the virus, if we're distancing six feet mouth-to-mouth and we're masking on top of that, then I think that, you know, hopefully we can understand that that is a safe precaution. But at the end of the day, I think what we need to be seeing in all of our buildings is some consistency on, on, I mean, again, for Nighting, it's not so much of a big problem, but we can't have some inconsistencies on how we're measuring desk across buildings because that is going to be reflective of how many kids we can fit in there. So I think we just need to tighten up on that.
Well, it also creates a parity issue in that we, we don't want to send the message to teachers that you'll be safer in Nighting than you will in the other buildings because the other buildings are not measuring the same exact way. We don't want to make one different than the others for those reasons too. And the other thing about, you know, when it was Dr. Damsker that gave us that guidance to measure person to person. And he was quite aware that kids don't sit still, but he did say, you know, it's prolonged contact, like 15 minutes of steady contact. So unless one student is leaning this way for the whole class and the other student is leaning that same way toward them, if they're moving constantly, it's not as much of a, of a factor. So I, I think, I mean, I'm not sure if, just looking at this picture, if moving them, you know, the, that extra 18 inches together would even gain you a, a fourth row in that classroom. But if it would, that may be something to help, to help alleviate some of the four and a half foot spacing that might be a QE or PAF or one, Richland, one of the other schools.
I really think we're getting stuck in the weeds here. I mean, you two are going out there and, and deciding what each building should do. Our job should just be to tell the, the people, the administrators, hey, you know, we want you to do the safest you can possibly make in your classrooms. And that should be our goal. Our goal should not be to go into a room with a tape measure and tell them how to do their job.
All due respect, Brian. All due respect, sir.
You don't.
I, 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 I'm sorry, but the, we have to have consistency.
I agree.
Hold on. We have to have consistency based on buildings and.
And the consistencies, consistency should be, we should be telling them, do what you can to make it safest possible environment.
We had desks in Strayer, they were at seven and a half feet.
Well, Chris, let me, let me, let me also interject. What we found today was invaluable. All right. If we would not have gone into those buildings today, which trust me, is not the way that I wanted to spend my day, but I felt it important enough to go, because the numbers didn't add up to me as a person who has gone into these buildings personally. And Chris and I and Dave went into the buildings previously and we saw the layouts. So when the numbers came back, it didn't make sense to us based on our own personal experience. So I will emphasize again, we have to have consistency. As a board, we're asking our administrators to move forward with the plan that we approved and the health and safety plan. We can't have some schools doing it a different way, buildings and others not. We have to have consistency across the board so we can get a full picture of how many people that we can fit in a space.
And what I'm saying is we shouldn't be here talking to, to the principal about this. We should be talking to the administration about this.
And we have, we have done it over and over. And we were assured that they weren't even doing it six feet desk to desk.
We're arguing back and forth and that's all we're doing.
Well, that's sort of a part of our job. But my ultimate comment is, we were told as a board that these were being measured person to person. When we saw the numbers, they didn't look right. And even though we were assured they were measuring this way, when Chris and I went in today, they weren't. So we have to be able to, we have to be able to have trust in the execution of the guidance that we're giving, given. And I'm not blaming anyone, but there has to be consistency.
As a matter of fact, this graphic was six feet to make that point. Between desks, it says it right there.
Correct. I was looking at that, that desk as the bubble, that, that student will be all over that desk and, and all around it. There'll be materials on the ground where they're getting their, their textbooks. There'll be pencil boxes where they're each going to have their own set of math manipulatives, crayons, any, any other resource that they may need will be all around that desk and, and they'll be, they'll be moving around. So I was looking at that as the, the space where that student will be inhabited.
The primary point is to make sure they're really somewhat consistent that it's
Sure.
six foot on center, not six foot arms out, not six foot laying down, right? Not six foot if I move left or right. It's just, because it's not that scientific. It's not like six foot one inch, the world is a happy place and, and five foot 11, everyone dies, right? So it's not that, it's crisp. It's, the point is like Dr. Damsker said, if we mostly follow the rules and mostly are masked, mostly are six feet, right? We just, you know, so the idea is to get as close, and if you have extra room, you can spread out more.
What I can say is, you know, can't get into the building yet. We're going to be there soon. And certainly can, can provide a little bit more analysis and, and, you know, lay the desks out when, when we're there.
And maybe too hard of a time for the record.
Yeah. I was going to say the same thing. You guys are, this is logistically a nightmare. And we do recognize it is. And just going in there today, thinking about all the different classrooms, especially those transitioning, this is a super difficult task. So I, I don't want to take away from that. I, I do just want us to make sure we are all on the same page because that is what our community deserves. So anyhow, we can move on.
Thank you.
I was, I was about to say that. I think we need to move on because we have a lot of presentations and it's 10:20.
True.
That's a great segue for me. For PAF, the largest school, like Mr. Godchalk said, there's no need to go into all the specifics, number by number. But I can attest to the fact that we have approximately 475 students that we are planning for in the spaces. And what has made this task challenging, now wait, let me say this. The measurements that you see, the six feet, the five feet or the four and a half feet are from student to student, from student in the center of the desk to the other student in the center of the desk and the area around them. So if it's, they are, if it's for four and a half feet, then it's four and a half feet from side to side and back to back for the classrooms that we set up. You also, also the disclaimer is every classroom is not set up at this time. So we do have the opportunity to be able to make adjustments as necessary as we continue to work on this model. But these, those measurements are accurate for your, for your viewing. But these, those, those measurements are accurate, um, for your, for your viewing. So with the 475 students that we're programming for, you can see that we have some challenges in certain grades because of the total class size. I want to draw your attention to, to that. The total class size, um, mainly in first grade was specifically challenging for us, because we had a total of 29 students that are registered and 22 of them wanted live or AB instruction. So that said, we had to plan for that possibility. You'll also notice that third grade also has 22 students live or AB that we needed to plan, plan for. So what we had to do was make the difficult decision as to who would get the largest spaces when possible. I made the decision that I was going to do it based off of the squirminess of the younger children. So I chose to allocate the largest space to the first grade instead of the third grade. But you'll see in our next slide that I had to make provision for even third grade in order to accommodate that. So Joe, that slides, again, just attest to what I said earlier, that whatever it is written there is from side to side and front to back measured today. Um, so in the next slide, so let's talk about this a little bit. Um, again, the distances are shown with a minimum separation, um, at any dimension. And obviously our rooms are various sizes, but they do tend to duplicate one another in the pods. So like the first floor, if the first floor in the pods are a certain size, so too was that same, those same dimensions used upstairs as well. So what we ended up having to do for first grade was we decided to use our library cafeteria and gymnasium. So not ideal for instruction, certainly ideal for safety purposes and allowing the children to have maximum space. In addition, due to the fact that we have, at, at the current time, not enough desks to accommodate the needs at this time, we had a lot of trapezoid tables that we had available. So not only will the children be able to, in first grade, be able to spread out from a desk perspective, from the space perspective, but they'll also have additional space, because they'll each have their own trapezoid table as their, uh, learning space. So we are able to accommodate that. Now I do need to give this one disclaimer. The library is actually not really conducive to the arrangement as it is. It's, um, it's just a very unique setup. So in order to facilitate that, we will have to remove shelving and books to accommodate that. But we're willing to do whatever we need to do in the interest of our children's safety and in compliance with our health, health and safety plan. So since the first grade will now be in the library cafeteria and gym, their classrooms were available for the use for our other classes. So third grade, as I mentioned to you before, also has 22 kids in the class. Our largest classrooms, besides our kindergarten classrooms and those large common spaces, are actually the fifth grade classrooms. So this year, the fifth grade classrooms will be moved to third grade and the third grade classrooms will be moved to the fifth grade, uh, space. That affords us just enough square footage to give the third grade students, even with 22 students in the class, the four and a half foot, uh, sa- social distancing opportunity. Half day K AM, in order to accommodate our large, our number of AM students, we ended up moving, because we had, at PAF have two sections of AMK, whereas the other schools have one. At PAF, we have two. So we're going to use that first grade classroom that's been vacated for half day kindergarten. Again, capitalizing on the few extra square feet in those rooms to provide maximum square feet, which is how we're able to, to give them some additional space there. Because we're using our common spaces and some of our, um, spaces will have to be used to support some of our other needs. We do have IU students in our building and such, so we are looking at how we can best allocate space to meet the needs of all students that are served at PAF. So we are looking to how we're using those spaces, but we also have, we're going to have to move the itinerary teachers who teach our special area classes, need to have the opportunity to have a place to plan and assess students, so on and so forth, and do, do things like that. So we will have to allocate alternative spaces for them since they've been relocated because of the use of those common spaces. And finally, we were looking at just the, the whole building plan and just the logistics on how we're going to provide an opportunity for parents to drop their students off or pick up their students, which we do have a high population. We always had a pretty good population of students who, who did that, but this year even more. And so we want to make sure that we don't have too many, uh, cars backed up on Sleepy Hollow Road. So we're going to probably have to make some revisions to where we're dropping off or where we're picking up and things like that. So we're working to, um, maximize the, 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 the route that we're using for the different things. So those are some of the things we want to keep in mind. So as you can see, this is one of our classrooms with four and a half feet between the students, if the desk was down, foots on left to right, the students, and then behind, from, from their chair back to the next student behind them who's also in their chair, it would be four and a half feet in that classroom. Um, you, we, you don't have a picture of this, but we did also set up the cafeteria. You don't have a picture of this at this time, but I can attest that we are able to do it and spread out even more as necessary to facilitate the instruction in those large group areas. Now we will have to make some purchases in order to make it a more ideal space, since it is a non-traditional space in that library, gym and cafeteria, but we're prepared to do that in support of our children's learning. Questions that you have to make?
I guess I, I, I'm just curious about the, the library, the way it's set up. I, I just, for the life of me, I can't picture it at the moment. I imagine we have freestanding shelves in the middle.
Like a maze.
Yeah, right. And we're going to take them all out, right? Yeah, okay. That's what I figured.
Yes, we would have to, the way we have it set up, so one of the challenges is, we always want to provide a space for teachers to be able to write and use like, uh, technology and such. Um, and typically we have in the library, we have an area right now that has that space available. However, it's in the far right corner. And so when we first started trying to plan it, we were trying to look at it through the lens of that, everything being set up in that far right corner. Well, obviously doesn't, that doesn't work, because the, the room is actually a little elongated if you were going from that particular area. So we're going to actually have to completely shift the way that we are utilizing the space and use portable, some type of portable, um, screen or, uh, writing, writing, uh, writing surface for the teacher so that we can maximize the space and still have all the children facing forward with a, a positive sight line to their teacher.
Have you evaluated use of your, uh, gazebo outside too, for like masking breaks and stuff like that?
We absolutely will be able to use it. I do have the one caution, and that is that it is out, in the out. It is in the open of our space, and I have no way to protect my children, because they are right there on the, um, right next to the macadam and the, um, there's no fencing or anything like that. So we are cautiously thinking through how we can utilize that, utilize that space, because it is a great space. But keep in mind that too, one of the things, since we're going to now use in the cafeteria as a classroom, we're, we're mindful of that as well, because it's also a very distractible space for, if you're going to have lots of people coming and going. And we are thinking, one of the entry points to your, since we're talking about it, one of the entry points we were thinking about was utilizing the door over there near the, um, near the cafeteria and such for entry for certain students, as we're trying to maintain opportunities for social distance, even for, um, arrival and dismissal.
Dr. Bradley, can you talk a little bit about the, um, uh, using the cafeteria and the gym as an instructional space and how that kind of looks and, and how that'll work?
Sure. So in our, the way our cafeteria is set up, we have a dividing wall that is able to be, um, pulled out. And of course, we would keep that out all the time. The way we have it set up, we would use that wall in the cafeteria so the children's backs are to the, the, the wall of windows that leads out to that nice patio area. We would, um, set, it's set everything up that way. And we would do the same thing in the gym, but in front of the stage. So that way, with the sound and the acoustics, we wouldn't have to do as much to kind of try to keep the, the, the classrooms very separate. But the spaces, because they're both wide, do afford the opportunity for students to really be well spaced out in the trapezoid tables.
Thank you.
We have questions?
My only comment is, and thank you very much for that presentation, I just want to remind people, since we haven't been able to go into the classrooms in every single instance, we may be able to be more creative when we get a chance to get in the classroom. And again, this is the worst case scenario. We may not have the kids, the 10% of kids coming back that we think will, and they are included in this model.
Minimal, minimal for a PAF. We, we only had a few students despite our population. We only had a few students that we don't, we cannot 100% account for. We made personal phone calls, we sent out multiple messages. It is our goal to get an accurate account of where each of our children will be.
Cause we out in Milford step it up when we're asked to, uh, register our kids.
I do love my PAF community. I do rely really heavily on you. You do a great job.
Great context. Thank you.
All right. I think I can jump in here and, and say hello, good evening, and, uh, thanks for giving me the opportunity to share and speak a little more about Quaker Town Elementary School and our data, as you can see up here on the screen. And you can see those numbers for, for QE. We currently have about 300 students registered, and this breaks down in terms of, uh, enrollment, percentage enrollment, about 69% students scheduled for live instruction, 6% of our students scheduled for the AB option or blue white, about 24, 25% of our students scheduled for, uh, remote instruction. Break that down a little more and provide context. We have various room, rooms measuring different sizes, as you would anticipate. So you'll see for some grade levels that there are two different distance numbers in the distance column. Meaning, for example, we have, uh, one classroom in third grade that can accommodate a five and a half feet social distancing, another third grade classroom that can accommodate a six feet social distancing. The distance column reflects a front to back measurement or from student to student, as, as we've been talking, or body to body or mouth to mouth. These numbers, as Ms. Edwards shared, reflect a minimum. Joe, if you could go to the next slide. To provide even more context, and, and what I mean, uh, that for every room and for every, uh, every grade level, there's the same or larger distance, side to side or, or, or body to body, or between two students sitting next to each other. So just want to make sure I clarify that and emphasize that. So the, the distance with the additional context, it's, it's at the, at the, at the minimum. As it relates to additional notes into adding on to what Ms. Edwards said, beginning of, beginning of the presentation, um, I just want to advocate for, for, uh, our QE students and staff as the only building in the district without AC. And now I've already had conversations with Mr. Kristine, Kristine about this and the reality, feasibility of having AC at, uh, QE, that it's not because of our structural and facility issues. Our next request would be for QE students and staff to use and have access to outdoor tents. While there is, uh, we have at least one fan in every room, uh, as you can imagine, it's often only moving hot air around. And, uh, while, while we are starting later in September and that, that will help. We still do have those hot days in September, May and June. Uh, we have a pavilion, which we will certainly utilize. But it'd be wonderful if we had additional space outside for those very hot days. And then, not on the slide, but, uh, if I'm going to, uh, recognize, thank and, and celebrate the incredible QE staff. We've been, we've been very hard at work planning, preparing for bringing students back safely to school. And I just want to make sure we note that daily for, for the last week and a half, we've been meeting in various planning groups centered around major systems and structures that are, are going to have significant needs and changes to adhere to our, our, our health and safety plan. Many members of our QE staff have voluntarily met to discuss planning for hallway transitions and movements, planning for student arrival dismissal, planning for fun, safe, structured recess, planning for what are PPE and sanitizing needs and many other, many other groups. We have about a dozen different subcommittee planning groups working, and I'm incredibly grateful and appreciative of the QE staff and teachers, aides, facility teams specifically, Mr. Joe Dibler and, uh, and Mrs. Uh, Mrs. Jen Datlaw. They've been remarkable, and I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize the work that they've been putting in this summer and, uh, their collaborative efforts to be part of a, a solution to bring our, you know, the QE students and staff back to school safely. And then you see the pictures there, those pictures are of, um, a fourth grade classroom and a third grade classroom, uh, six feet and four and a half feet. So just a visual though, the, uh, I don't know if that, that gives you a good, uh, as, as a good, uh, feeling and, and recognition as in person, but you can see that they, the spacing distance. So at this time, I'll entertain any questions for QE.
I know the pavilion's kind of small. I mean, you guys can utilize it, but it's really kind of small even for one class. So I have to imagine a tent is pretty necessary for you guys.
I would appreciate that. We would appreciate that.
The one thing I would ask is, uh, you mentioned that with air conditioning, uh, mask breaks seem to be extra important in that kind of a, a setting. I'm not sure what other precautions you're considering as well, but, um, that's a, it's a real concern with, uh, all the kids and staff walk around in masks all day. So I, I trust you guys are working on something for that.
Free quit mask brace, yes.
Is actually, can you talk about how you're going to account for the safety in these tents? Cause that seems to me to be a safety concern. But Dr. Bradley had mentioned over at PAF, similar concern.
It's fenced in, isn't it?
Not completely.
So the safety concern as it relates to COVID-19 QCSD safety plan measures, safety concern as it relates to the structure of the tent and.
Well, the structure and, and the kind of the openness, like the ability for someone to just walk into the.
Well, it wouldn't be any different from recess then either, right?
Well, Chris?
I said, it, that would sort of be the same as recess, because they're outside in that same area for recess. So.
One of the things, one of the things we have later on is a, um, asking you for, for you to authorize us to rent about $50,000, up to $50,000 worth of tents. So we have a lot of outdoor opportunities for students to be undercover and to be outside in more open spaces. Brian, I understand your, I understand your safety question. Will we have patrols outside and all that? No, they would have to be located closer in where they have their playgrounds, um, where there's fencing around them and whatnot. And as Dr. Bradley says, she has a very narrow backyard and where they, she could put a tent, there is no fence. So, so they just, it's, uh, school dependent.
Would, did you guys look in? I know you said you were looking at renting them. Would it be any cheaper for us to just buy some? Just think about it, just to throw it out there.
We're, we're playing every angle, sir.
My, my other concern would be with the tents, what about that one day in late September when it gets cold? You know, or when it rains like it did last Tuesday, you know, how, how would that work?
The, the tents aren't for classes like all the time on a set schedule. They're for like mask breaks or, hey, I'm going to do class outside today because it's nice. And between the teachers, they worked out who's going to go outside that day. It's not for a steady classroom type setting.
Oh, my apologies. I misunderstood that.
This is coming from the West Coast girl, but you know what? This is when you need better weather in Pennsylvania. Most of my classes were outside in college.
Well, Jenny, what can you do?
What can you do about that, Jen? We're, we're all ears.
I can do nothing. I cannot bring you California Southwest weather, but just saying.
How unfortunate. I think a lot of our buildings though, don't have fences, to be fair. Um, I can tell you that my children who were in Nighting Valley, previously to Wickham Valley at recess, did not have a fence, uh, you know, around them. So it does present us a unique challenge that we have to take seriously. So we, we have to make sure we have the supervision in place, but I don't think it's uncommon to a lot of our buildings.
Yeah, none of the schools actually have a full fence around a playground. They're all relative. They're all relatively open.
Hey guys, it's getting late. Can we keep rocking and rolling with the presentations?
Thanks, Keith.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll go up next then. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk with you about what we're preparing for at Richland. We have about 375 students enrolled, much like Dr. Bradley referenced. That's really accounting for every student minus a few at the most. So these are very realistic numbers for us. At Richland, the class, the classroom sizes, the majority of classrooms are actually very comparable sizes. When we look at even the actual dimensions of each room, they're very, very similar to each other. So this was interesting. First of all, we did measure them, desk to desk, center of desk to center of desk, so that it was student to student. So that does reflect here. When we looked at make, setting up some sample classrooms, we set some up in each hallway, in each section, in each grade level. And we were really finding when we were physically doing it, we were still getting very similar results as far as capacity. So if we look at kindergarten, perhaps a kindergarten and full day kindergarten, where our numbers are right now, we can get six foot distance there. And that's six feet from middle of desk to middle of desk, left, right, side by side. And also from the middle of the desk, the center to the center of the desk behind it as well. All of the other grade levels with comparable sized rooms were four and a half feet from middle of desk to the middle of desk behind and five feet from side to side, from the middle of the desk to the middle of the desk where students would be. We do have more details on the next slide, but if you do look at the upper grades, we have more students there. We have 17, 18, 19 students that are going to physically be in those classrooms and they are of comparable sizes for the kindergarten rooms. So the kindergarten rooms kind of hit that six feet perfectly right there. Our first grade is a little bit over. If we did have a couple of students less, we'd be able to get closer to six feet. You can go to the next slide.
Can I just stop there though? The, can we go back one, one little, yeah? Joe, can you go back one slide there? The one thing that I think stands out to me is the grade level one. You're saying at 12 feet, I mean 12 students, we can fit at four and a half. But yet in the fourth grade, at 18.7 students, we have the same distance. If the classrooms are comparable, for the most part, I'm trying to understand the discrepancy.
They are, it's a very good question. They are, they are comparable. They are not exactly the same. So for example, when we get down to the fifth grade classrooms, the fourth grade classrooms, we could fit at that four and a half distancing. We could fit 22 or 23. When we look at the second grade, third grade, first grade classrooms, we would be able to fit closer to 19 or 20. So they're comparable. I didn't mean to say they were exactly the same, but they are comparable. So when you do get a little extra feet, it does afford us an extra, an extra couple of desks. If those numbers were bigger. Again, with first grade, if we were able to put two students in a different spot, we would be able to get closer to that six feet. We can fit more students, or excuse me, it's bigger, so we can fit more students comparably. And fourth grade is our highest numbers. And fortunately, they're already located in the larger classrooms, even though they're all comparable, so that they're able to fit that max that we have it set up there for 19 right now.
Okay, that, that helps. So it sounds like we may be able to creatively spread them out to, to accommodate. I think what, what the goal is for everybody here, for the teachers, we want to make them feel comfortable in achieving that distance. So that's, that's the main reason for the question.
Yeah, first, first grade's kind of right at that cusp a little bit for us. I do have, you can go to the next one. This next slide just really illustrates again, as I said, these were all measured from the center of desk to center of desk, four and a half feet from front to back, five from side to side. And then on the next slide, please. So I just want to talk about our common areas as well. We have a multipurpose room, so that room is our gym and it's our cafeteria. So that's the, one of the common rooms that we do have. We could fit two classes in there at six feet from the center desk to center desk, side to side and back to front. As we said before, there's definitely more effect on instruction. We do have a divider in our multipurpose room, but the way that it's divided, it would not afford us to be able to get an entire class at six feet on one side. So we'd have to do some other kind of divisions. So for the most part, it really would be like two full classrooms in a larger space. So definitely not ideal, but could be done. We also have an art music room that's a comparable size. Our library, that's basically a regular classroom size. Our library is comparable. It is a little bit bigger. It is an interesting, or it's a narrower shape and longer. So we would be able to get closer to that six feet in there, especially for some of the classes that were not at higher numbers. So ultimately, we could not optimally at all for instruction. If we were to move two, two classes into the multipurpose room, that would really be our options. And then again, as, as Dr. Bradley referenced with PAF, moving everything from our library. And we would be able to put one of the smaller sized classes and get closer to six feet in there. But that kind of is where we run out of options other than, again, like in that first grade, if there were less students in that classroom. So we're, we're absolutely trying to get as much space as possible. We, we've assembled teams also and have teachers working around the clock on the task force that I'm on and as well as just volunteering their own time, Richland staff, when we get together, talking about logistics of how this could look. And I'm sure I speak for, for every one of us that, you know, we want teachers to feel comfortable. We want parents, we want kids, we want everyone to feel comfortable. And we're really trying to get the maximum amount of space that we can.
So you, you could have two classes in the same grade though, and possibly like a co-teacher situation, which I know would be like atypical and not normal, but you could run two classes almost simultaneously, side by side with two teachers.
Haven't, haven't explored that, but.
In addition, I guess that would be as an alternative to putting up the separator. You'd almost have to run them simultaneously in order for it to be most productive, I guess. Anyway.
Yeah, and this is just an example, one of our full day classroom spread out at six feet from center to desk to center desk, front to back and side to side on the right. And then this was our, one of our fourth grade classrooms that has set up for 19 desks right now. So they are five feet side to side, center to center of desk and four and a half back to back. It's interesting when you go in person because there are definitely logistics of not putting a desk near a door, making sure an external door does not have something next to it or that a sink is, is available for students to walk by. But we're certainly trying to maximize our space.
Ms. Rubus, if you had to go into the multipurpose room, how would you accommodate the students who are on, at home on the A B or the virtual students? If, because you say something about not having access to the technology.
Yeah, we would, we would have to then, because it's not set up for the technology, that's all. So we would have to then put technology on carts. We would have to work with some kind of projectors, makeshift, and I'm sure we could certainly figure it out technology wise. It would just be further impact on the instruction.
Right, right. Thank you.
Now for some of the classrooms that are spread at four and a half feet, you know, I have heard from some teachers that they're concerned with having lunch or mask breaks in those, in those spaces. You know, and will the lunches be delivered to the classrooms or will the kids go out and pick them up?
They're going to be delivered. So the lunches would be delivered to the classrooms and all students are eating in the classrooms. That's definitely a challenge, especially for us, because I would not feel comfortable, just as it's in our health and safety plan, for the students to take their masks off to eat lunch if they're not six feet apart. So that's, right, so that's something that we have to then consider. Okay, are we moving kids more and using some of that, you know, door space or right outside the hallway? We're definitely going to get, have to get creative in terms of lunchtime.
Are the lunches being prepared in each building or are they going to be centrally prepared and delivered to each building? So are we going to have cafeteria staff, you know, you know, actually, you know, cooks in the kitchen making those bag lunches up? Or will they all be made at the high school and sent out in their van or whatever?
I could answer that, Chris. Each kitchen will be open. There will not be a central, we don't have the resources to transport in temperature controlled vehicles all over the district. So each kitchen will be open.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, I'll gladly touch base on Trumbausville. I'll go through the, the numbers in the way the other schools have. I can start by saying the distance you see at the far right hand column of the slide is center to center, kid to kid. We're pretty, pretty really, in really good shape all around, six feet for the most part. There's two of, of classes that are tight on space, or I should say tighter. And that's second grade and fifth grade. I can talk about those a little bit as we go forward. That right now, the, where we have the most space happens to be third grade and first grade with some creative work there. So if the next slide, you can go through and look at that. Again, these are the numbers, just a little bit of added context for that last column. Everything center desk, center to desk in all of the grades. Second grade and fifth grade, again, it's roughly, or it's going, excuse me, side to side is where it's a little tighter, front to back, we definitely increase the space. And certainly we'll be doing everything we can to stretch every inch out of that, even though it, as Mr. Klein said, it doesn't magically change once you, you hit six feet. But we'll be stretching all of that out with final tweaks on furniture and space in the classrooms. We are currently in the classrooms and that's, that's a big positive for us. First grade, I said there was a little bit of creative scheduling there or logistics. Trumbausville, if you might remember, has a flexible design i- in the architecture of the building. So all of our classrooms have the opportunity to pull back a wall a little bit and be used as larger spaces. Because we have two sections of first grade, the center room that used to be a first grade classroom is vacant. And we have opened up the walls on both of those classrooms so that each first grade classroom actually gets a class and a half in space. And then that's divided down the middle, so that, that has been a positive for us. Third grade, again, good in space. One little thing we needed to do is one third grade class will be located away from the other third grade classes. Not ideal, but, but minor given that it gives us more space. So if you know Trumbausville, typically we're K1, 2 on one side, 3, 4, 5 on the other side of the school. We mix that a little bit this year, but again, the name of the game is space in the classroom and the larger classroom for that third grade group is on the other side of the school. So we'll take care of that. And then fifth grade and it could put second grade there as well. Again, just larger numbers of kids in the classes and virtually fifth grade. I highlighted it there because we had more kids, particularly second grade. We have two sections as opposed to three, and that's what gives us the higher numbers. But again, we're at four and a half, side to side, greater than that, almost six front to back and still looking to squeeze every inch out of that that we can to, you know, be in line with this health and safety plan and put the best, best environment forward for our kids and our, and our staff. If you can go to the next slide, please, Joe. Here's a couple of pictures. The picture on your left is one of the first grade classrooms that I spoke of. That's at six feet distancing, just around the, the white wall there where the little bookshelf is on the right hand side. That is where it opens up to the back of the class. And again, there's about four desks back there that are, are facing the board and then some extra space. So that's first grade. And the picture on the right is second grade. And again, that, that front row is the row that was the, the, the little bit of a challenge. They're about four and a half feet, a little bit more in the middle. And then between the front row and the back row, there is, there is space. Again, you can see along that back wall, there's some bookshelves right behind those last two desks. Again, we moved those out of the way. I, that'll give space for the students to sit. But there are certain little things like that as we get in the rooms. Every room's currently set up in Trumbausville, but as teachers get, get more and more in the space and we just kind of tweak what we can, we'll bring every inch out of our area. And that's Trumbausville. Questions that you might have for me?
Quick one, carpeting. Is there extra cleaning procedures put in? So, you know, when a kid sneezes, droplets tend to go downward especially, and if they are wearing face shields instead. So, you know, is carpeting cleaned? This is really the only school that has that much carpeting. So I, I would assume there's a different procedure for that. I haven't seen anything in the plan about that. I guess for.
Yeah, I'll default to, I can speak to that certainly, but Zach, I don't know if I default to you or anyone else who wants to talk more about facilities.
I'll have to get back to you on carpet specifics. I know Rob's on vacation this week, so he's not with us. I know the buildings will be sanitized every night with those sprayers. Not sure how that applies to hallway carpet, if you were referring to the hallway. But the classrooms will be completely sprayed, so.
The, the one thing I would, would say on that, and again, certainly it's not my area of ever, of complete utter critique, but I will say that, you know, one of the things we're going to be paying extra attention to is just the carpets because of lunch being in the classroom. So I know that there is going to be extra attention to the cleaning of the carpets and just making sure that the space is safe for the kids.
And free of ants, the third eating lunch.
Keep in mind that our cafeteria is carpeted and we, our custodial staff's fantastic and we keep that spick and span. And it's always clean. So I'm completely confident in the, in the custodial staff and the cleanliness of the building.
Thank you, elementary principals for illuminating clearly your data and what it means and what it, what it looks like. I wanted to comment on one thing that was, that was raised. Our, our goal at elementary was to accommodate all of the students who wanted live instruction. So if we are able to do that, I don't think that the measurements at each building are going to be consistent because every building is going to spread out to the maximum extent possible while providing live instruction to all of the students that have requested it. So I do think that we will see differences in, in the, the exact distance between students in different buildings and in different classrooms based on how much space they have. So I did want to offer that clarification. And before I do the secondary notes, I, I want to take responsibility here for the secondary principals doing their measurements edge to edge. That was my fault in the clarity of the communication that I provided to them. They have throughout this entire process done everything absolutely in good faith and in conformance with what the board has stated that they want. And that was my error and I don't want the comments that were made to reflect on them. So it's important to me that I, that I say that because they did have done nothing except be absolutely responsive to every single thing they've been asked to do. And I think those of you that participated today saw that. They redid all of their data in time for tonight. And I just don't want the fact that, that they initially did their measurements edge to edge and didn't make the shift after Dr. Damsker's comments. That does, that is not their, their fault. So I, I feel obligated to say that because of the comments that were made.
Well, I for, I for one think it's great to do the, the longest we can get for six foot distancing. If that's possible, kudos to Nydic to be able to do that. And if that can be done, that's great. And if that can be done in other schools, that's great too.
So the notes on secondary, the things that apply to all of the buildings, no, no lockers will be used. So students will carry, you know, their, their belongings with them. They are using an overflow strategy. So when they talk to you about their data, they have to look at everything on a period by period basis because the number of students in different classrooms changes every, every period of the day. So when they were looking at it, they're identifying the maximum number of desks in the classroom, comparing that to the enrollment in each class period and then identifying the number of overflow students that would need to access the instruction remotely from a common area in the building. So that's how they worked through the, the analysis. There are some other strategies that they're using. We have to be very honest that secondary transition times are not going to allow very much distance. We have to be very honest that secondary transition times are not going to allow very much distancing. And, you know, everyone has seen the pictures that came out of Georgia, I think it was, a district there. And those of you that have been in our high school under normal circumstances know that the hallways are very crowded during class changes. So our administrators will be using strategies like making the transition time longer and dismissing classes on some kind of staggered basis, things like that, to try to reduce the crowding. But, but we have to be very clear that social distancing will not be maintained during class changes. Another strategy to reduce the number of class changes is for instruction to be in a modified block, meaning that not every class would be offered every day. Now normally this would present an enormous challenge. You know, teachers spend a lot of time learning how to teach effectively in a block. However, because the instructional day is shorter, the periods would not be like double periods like in a, in a traditional block schedule. So, and it also, it minimizes transitions. And it, I think, is more effective for instructional purposes because teachers have the students with them a little bit longer, you know, instead of a 35-minute period or whatever. It's a, it's a meaningful time. Next slide, Joe. Okay, and so we will start with the sixth grade center, Mr. Thompson.
All right, great, thank you, Ms. Edwards. I'm going to try to keep my, my specific remarks very brief. As you can see, our enrollment at the sixth grade center is, is around 365 students. Of those students who selected live as their first choice or hybrid as their first choice when taking half of the hybrid students, we'll be, we'll have about 75% of our students in the building on any given day, which, if you could go to the next slide, please, Joe. In looking at the courses that are offered period by period and the, the social distancing center line to center line with our desks, we feel like we're in a pretty good spot in not having unmanageable amounts of students in an overflow space. So with, with our calculations with physical distancing in the sixth grade center, period by period, six feet center line, mouth to mouth, or whatever phrases we're using, the numbers, if you see, some of the numbers are as high as 29, as low as five. My goal over the course of the next couple of weeks are to either look to reschedule students, students who may be in classes that if the capacity of a specific room is 18 and there are 21 students scheduled in that class, taking three students and putting them in the same class, keeping the integrity of their course selections and needs, and, and rescheduling some of them somewhere where perhaps there may be 14 students who selected live or, or hybrid based on enrollment. So that's one of the strategies. Another strategy might be looking at some of our larger spaces like our library, like our cafeteria, and, or other larger classrooms and, and looking to move higher population periods or higher, class teachers with higher populations to those other spaces for their classes. So we're, we're, there's a lot to be done and finalized at this point. But I feel really good about having all of the students who selected to be live in the building or to be in the building on an A, B, or hybrid basis, to have them in their classes and, and keep them socially distanced at six feet center line to center line. So I'm, I'm just going to summarize this. There are specific strategies we're going to use. I just shared a number of them. We're going to do absolutely everything that we can to ensure the safety of our students in moving around, following our district's health and safety plan. There are two classrooms currently that are empty because of teacher transfers during the course of this past summer. We may look to, to figure out how to creatively use those spaces if it helps us to achieve our goals in some way of helping students, getting more students in the classrooms. And then you can see specifics about the art room, which I spoke to our art teacher just about ways because it's actually a very small space. And then also our family consumer science classroom, which I've been in communication with our teacher for, for that course. So here are a couple of pictures. These are pictures of, of two classrooms. The one on the right, though, is, is using edge to edge, six feet, which was our original when they, the classrooms were set up. So it looks, there are less desks in that space. We didn't have a revised picture for, in time for press for the presentation. But that's, that's what we look like in the sixth grade center. So what questions do you have? What questions can I answer for you at this time?
Can you say, you don't have to go into specifics, but I assume the proximity of the sixth grade center to the high school, there is consideration of using the sixth grade center for some overflow from high school occasionally?
Yeah, that, that, that's a strategy that, yes, I've been in discussion with Mr. V about that even before this pandemic.
So I had a question then as well. If you go back, Joe, or I don't know who has control over the screen, one more. So if you go back here, I just wanted to point out to everybody, this second to last column here, all students' first choice at three feet, how it conflicts with the health and safety plan. That was the, the original measurement was at three feet edge to edge, really turns into five feet when you, when you measure center to center. So I did want to say, you know, it might be even a possibility that if we did consider that where it does conflict with the health and safety plan, but we are revising the health and safety plan today, most likely. And part of that revision says we may be able to drop below six feet, but maybe set a, a minimum of five feet on that, which would allow you to then handle some of that overflow if you just needed to do it in a few rooms here and there. And if the board were comfortable doing that. That's just a comment that I wanted to make. So on this list right now, wherever you see all, you know, choice at three feet, three feet really is five feet on here.
And I would agree with what Chris just said. I, I've seen it. It may not seem like it, but from mouth to mouth, you're going to get that extra two feet because of the desk space. And it's pretty substantial, like when you're sitting there, it feels like a good amount of space.
All right, are we moving along?
We have to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. And Bubs are here. Thank you for your time so I can have an opportunity to share Strayer enrollment capacity information with you. A lot of work's been done, as you've been hearing all night long. So thanks to our administrators. Thanks to Mr. Lesher, the assistant principal at Strayer. Mrs. Kyosian, our administrative intern, have done a lot of work to help with this. Our teachers, support staff have been meeting regularly, many, many of them in meetings that we've been having to, to work through some logistics to this. So they're also participating in PD and leading PD as well. So just needed to make sure I said that, very, very appreciative of the Strayer team, QCSD team. This slide shows enrollment. I did break it down in grade seven and grade eight, and then the total. Couple of things to note here, though, in grade seven and grade eight, when we look at percentages of live, hybrid, and virtual, it's almost identical for the two grade levels. So looking at total is appropriate here. Also, not all the classes at Strayer are grade specific. Some students are in mixed classes at grade levels. So total, you can see that live was 62%, hybrid 21%, and students choosing 100% virtual was 17% or is 17%. Like Ms. Edwards said, we're using this overflow strategy just to provide the analysis to you. So in the seven periods that run, there's a column for the number of classes that run each of those periods, total number of seats available, the number of classes with overflow students. So the number of different content areas and classes that would be filtering and moving to overflow areas. So the fifth column is where all of the students could have their first choice met. So that percentage is taking those from live and then half who've chosen virtual to be able to see who's, how many are in the building each time, or each time, or each day. So it's 72%, and this reflects the six-foot center to center. Period one, 106 students roughly with the numbers I have now. 106 students would need to go to an overflow area. And then you can see the rest of the periods there. So one of my periods do have, the fifth period have 40 students. So only one of my overflow areas would need to be used. But that ranges then period four up to 143. So that would be utilizing, all of the rest would be utilizing two or possibly three. Overflow areas, meaning the cafeteria, part of the gymnasium, because I do have health and physical education, physical education classes running, instructional classes in there. And then if needed, the auditorium, which isn't ideal because there's no desk in there. And also a couple of periods of our day, we have instruction running in the auditorium with our dance class. So the column with the three foot just shows that the numbers drop significantly, pretty much to, to not needing the overflow capacity. But the last column there, if all of the students run in a hybrid, that would be 42% capacity roughly. That also, that number would go up a little bit. When you had heard earlier from Ms. Edwards about our students who have an IEP or English language learners who would be in the building live full-time. So that, that number would increase a little bit. But at six foot from center to center, every one of the periods is under 10. That ranges from some of them being zero students needing to go to an overflow area to eight, eight or nine. So I can make minor schedule adjustments and to avoid an overflow area altogether. So, so that would be key to, to not have students going to an overflow area. It's minimizes transition time in hallways. It eliminates the need for teachers to create internal rotations or administration to create internal rotations of who goes to an overflow when. Because students at a secondary level are going all over throughout the different classes that they sign up or that they have to take, there could be a possibility that a student could spend more than one period a day in an overflow area. So eliminating that overflow area would, would be helpful in many challenges that are presented at Strayer. Couple of other things on the note slides here. I think I did explain the overflow areas. I didn't include the library in that. I anticipate that being a instructional space. If we go anything less than six foot, there's just definitely additional impacts. Probably one of the biggest is to be able to provide a mass break and the logistics of providing mass break if we're under six foot. Also, we have difficulty with maintaining distancing if we are giving a snack break. We are working on plans for bathroom monitoring and making sure we're safe there and following procedures and social distancing. So I need two additional aids to help with that. And kind of speaking about the tents that were mentioned earlier, I foresee that being a good strategy to use at Strayer. We have a courtyard. So in terms of the safety, perhaps a tent could be placed in the courtyard or we could find another place as well. But this, this could be additional rotation of instructional space or maybe a solution for our music classes. So those are a couple, a couple of the things. Of course, we're working through this daily. The pictures there, you see the pictures at three foot, and that's three foot edge to edge. And the one on the right is six foot. Although that, like Mr. Thompson said, for the sixth grade center, that this picture is edge to edge. So when we go center to center, three more desks would be in that classroom. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. And thank you for allowing me some time, if you're still awake, to, to pay attention to the high school numbers here. So for the high school, the total enrollment, we're looking at 1,741 students. So by far the largest school in the district. We did not break it down by grade level here just because grade levels in the high school are, are really not a concept that's worth exploring. Outside my English one class, that's possibly the only one that is grade pure. All other classes are not grade pure. So it's better just to look at it from a, from a school-wide perspective. We had 884 students select the live version, 433 hybrid, 249 virtual. We have about 10% of students who have not registered. And so in our calculations that I used, and Joe, you can flip the slide, I used the 75% of the students would be in the building at a, if they, if they would get all their choices. If we would go full hybrid, we would go by a number that is half of 84% or 42%. And, and so the calculations I'm happy to provide to you, so they're right here for you to see. For full disclosure, we did measure edge to edge as well and, and made the last minute revisions today. So for the full and complete analysis, we have that available for the edge to edge. Based on the time limitations, we based the center to center data in this, in the notes here, based that off of the edge to edge and just bumped it by, by a percentage increase. So what we did is we remeasured eight classrooms, found an average capacity increase of 50%. So where a classroom previously was measured for us to have a capacity of 16, that would after measuring it differently, now become 24. So essentially a classroom that was a four by four with 16 rows, 16 chairs, we were able to put a row on the side and a row in the back, making it a five by five, almost at 25. So we, we saw, we saw basically a 50% increase. We applied that across the board from our edge to edge analysis, with the exception of some of the smaller lab rooms, the, the bigger science rooms, we were able to do that with the smaller lab rooms. We were not, we anticipated about an increase of 25%. So the numbers you see here are based on that. For a full and complete analysis to go room by room, I would need a little bit more time to present that. But I, I'm confident that these are pretty accurate for, for your information. We did look at six feet distancing. So as you see here, all students received their first choices. We're looking at quite a significant overflow room still at six-foot distancing. As you might imagine with number of classrooms, even if we have, I'd say, three students in each classroom that need to go to an overflow room. If you multiply that about 70 classrooms three times a year, about 210 students who would need to go in the overflow room. So that's quite a significant overflow there. If we were to move to an all hybrid, A, B, the numbers would significantly drop and you see that. Not a whole lot of students would need to go to the overflow room. Frankly, in some cases, it's, it's, it's just less than a handful of students that, that would need to be accommodated. Some of that might be accommodated by, by regular attendance, whereas the student is absent from a classroom, might not have any overflow at all. The same caveat there, and, and you see the little asterisks in the bottom, that if we do choose to go with that model and special ed and ELL students would be attending live where normally they, they would not if they were in a hybrid, then those numbers will increase slightly. So if that needs to be accommodated, those numbers are not included in this, in this graph. You see the bottom, the overflow capacity at six feet is 146. So if we just use our overflow rooms at 146 students, then the red numbers you see would not be able to accommodate in the overflow room. For the purposes of this graph, we used the upper gym as our overflow room as well as the track area. We do have some classrooms that may not be in use every period of every day due to teachers being unprepped, due to other scheduling items. We, we might be able to put some students in those rooms. However, those rooms would then have, have to be staffed because regardless of the ratio of students in those rooms, even if I put 12 students in a room, I would have to have it staffed because we can't have students unsupervised. And so if we choose to open up additional overflow rooms, that's a possibility. But just know that that would have to come with additional staffing needs. Joe, why don't we go to the next slide? So for the, for the high school, distancing cannot be accommodated during transition times. By using a block schedule, we can reduce the number of transitions. But even a staggered transition at the high school presents some difficulty. If I were to say my odd-numbered classes dismissed before my even-numbered classes, that, that's going to just result in odd-numbered classroom students waiting for the other classes to be dismissed in the hallway. And so you would still meet each other in the hallway. And so distancing during transition times is going to prove to be very difficult. Our band classes, so our band and choir classes... Our band classes, so our band and choir classes are our largest classes in the school. One period. So that will likely not be able to be accommodated in those rooms. And so we would have to have an overflow room just for those rooms specifically. And so we chose to do that in the cafeteria and in the Q-back. Obviously not ideal, but in order to accommodate all the students in the, in there would be, that would be necessary. That would be less of a need if we were on a hybrid schedule with.
I think Joe froze. While, while he's waiting, could I ask a quick band question here? On the block scheduling, will that mean that the band may be only going to class half of the year?
No, we are still looking at offering it every other day. Or, or on a, on a hybrid, it would be on every other day schedule. And my understanding is that students will arrive by geographical area, so I can't have possibly all the students in there at the same time.
So I, I'm just wondering how the, the block schedule works. Does it work by semester? So, so maybe, you know, there will be students that would miss a whole semester of, say, choir or band or something like that.
At the high school, we have not explored that. At the high school, we are looking at offering it on a, on either a day one or a day two. Alternating whether that's day one, day two consistently alternating, or if we have an AA blank BB or an ABAB. We're not sure about that yet, but we're not looking at making it a semesterized course.
There was some feedback about trying to keep those days consistent, and I kind of agree with that. So don't rotate like three days, two days, three days, two days.
Correct. So the, the draft that I have in place right now would be that we would have one cohort come in Monday, Tuesday, another cohort come in Wednesday, sorry, Thursday, Friday. And that would be consistent every week, rather than doing the A-B where it would flip from Tuesday, Thursday to Monday, Wednesday, Friday, like you said. Yes.
Was everybody all, all virtual then on Friday?
So in the draft I had in front of me, it would be all virtual on Wednesday.
Well, live students would still be there.
Can I ask a question? What, what, we talk about all these overflow areas and stuff. I'm thinking about the student experience. How does that look?
From a high school perspective?
From any perspective?
So, so at the high school, like I said, the overflow room, at the, if we chose to come back five days a week, that would be quite significant. It would be full. We would have a lot of students in the, in the upper gyms spaced out at six feet with their desks. And we would have a number of aides to supervise the students in that overflow room. I will have to mention too, at a five-day return, a full return for all students who have chosen it, there is not really a way for me to guarantee that students won't be in the overflow room for, for only one period a day. It might be even for two periods a day. Especially if we need to give priority to some of the special education students, the ELL students. Then, then, then there might not be enough of a rotation to make sure that students only go in there one time a day. In the full hybrid model, you saw the numbers drop significantly. So if everyone goes hybrid, then there's very little need for an overflow room. And so it would be a vastly different experience for the students when they are in the building, given that they are in the building less.
So I guess Keith, I have the same concern you do that, you know, hybrid works really good for the staff and for the teachers to help lower the numbers in the class. But the families that don't have support for those kids to learn at home when they're on their off-days, it is, it is going to be devastating for them, you know.
Chris, I, I agree a hundred percent with you. The, the issue becomes is, and this is more for the administration, is there an opportunity to look at? Is there a way that we can look at sort of a hybrid model, a virtual model, and in-class for a subset of, subset of kids? And, and I go back to something I said, I think, the last board meeting. I'm still trying to wrap my head around. How does this day look for a teacher? And, and like I'm struggling with this concept. I, I, I mean, my head's all over the place right now. I'm trying to understand it all. Not to mention, it's eleven-thirty at night and we're making this vastly, I mean, after everybody's been up all day, this is.
Well, the one question I, I did pose yesterday, and it always doesn't give many people a chance, would be to say, could we look at it from a different lens and say, what, what would happen if we eliminated the hybrid model and only brought kids back full-time? But we would bring less kids back full-time. So we're not bringing more kids into the school. We're just bringing less kids into the school. So yes, it is still going to be forcing some kids to be doing virtual because the only two options will be virtual and full back, right? But the ones that are coming full back could be the ones prioritized, the ones that have no support at home or the ones that have really heavy AP class loads, the ones with IEPs, the ones, you know, the ones that need to be in school then could be in school.
But you're gonna make, you're gonna make that.
Back to my original, my original point was, if we bring everybody back and that experience is awful. And they're all over the place. They're learning in, in, you know, these, these, you know, auditoriums.
Well, we could limit the amount of kids that come back, so that wouldn't happen.
And who makes that determination, though?
I, I, I don't know where you make the cutoff. I mean, I honestly don't. I mean, if, if. And look, we've heard.
A cutoff now, forcing everyone to do virtue, or forcing everyone to do hybrid.
Because we have to. I mean, did you see the overflow? Did you see the overflow numbers if we don't go hybrid? And I'm, I'm all for going full back. I'm all for going back full-time. I want kids in the schools. I want everybody, I'm just, I'm one of those crazy people who thinks the, the, that this COVID virus, if we look at the statistics, it's really no more bad. There's no worse than a bad flu season. That's what the actual statistics show, but nobody believes that.
I revoke my vote.
Yeah, I revoke my vote too. Ron, no.
Idea here, my idea here isn't, isn't, deal, it would not deal with overflow at all. We would only allow as many kids back as would fit without overflow. So in, in that case, in that case, yes, we're gonna have to do a cutoff. Yes, some people aren't gonna.
Hold on, Chris, you interrupted. Ron didn't finish his thought. I'm, I'm curious as to what he was getting at.
I thought everybody else shot him up, but.
We did, but we voted him off the island again, but I want to hear the thought.
My point was a simple one. There's no way we can get everybody back in live. It just can't happen, okay? For, for, Chris, I understand what you want to do, but who in the world is going to be that person who goes down our roster and selects those children who are lucky enough to go back full-time? We all said this, when we put this plan out, we said best to get everybody back full-time. For those kids who really want it, we're gonna do our best. But if we can't do it, then we've got to go. I saw the numbers, those people who would be in the, the overflow rooms, over a hundred? That's insane. I mean, think about that quality of education. You're the kid who goes to school and expects to sit with your classmates, but no, no, no. You're in the overflow section today. It's, we are not going to get the numbers we need.
I will say though, some people do thrive in that atmosphere, the independent, Ron. So like, you know, of course, it may not be all those hundred kids, but there is that certain selection, the kid that is going to be in that school and in that position in that different room, even though they're learning over their computer virtually. You know, they, they may thrive in that situation. Well, I would challenge you all to do this, to think about it this way. Which is more damaging, forcing all kids into hybrid? So we're, we're telling all parents that they now have to find care for their kids that are going to be at home three days a week. Forcing all kids from eight, from grade seven through twelve into hybrid or having to be the bad guy and cut some people off from their first choice of going back live.
But IEPs are going to be accommodated.
Yep, they are the first, that would be the number one on the list.
Yeah, let me, let me clarify that really quick. IEP students will be accommodated to return back to five days should they elect for that. So I think we are protecting our most vulnerable students by allowing that. And I, look, Chris and I have talked about this personally. I don't feel comfortable telling those who chose hybrid that they now have to go or, you know, or, or excuse me, even the ones that chose full day. We can't just arbitrarily say, we're gonna cut those people off from what they chose. I don't feel like that's the right choice.
Told them they may not get their first choice. I mean, that was part of the whole.
But the kids who are the most vulnerable, at least from an education standpoint, I feel more comfortable. This is just me speaking as a board member who is not speaking for everyone else. The virus, we know, spreads from ten years old and younger. The data that we have so far states that the virus is much less likely to transmit. Our high school students are our most at-risk students, in my opinion, of transmitting the virus, even though our cases are low. So. They will, but it, but, but the bottom line is, we can't get our kids back to school if our teachers don't feel safe.
But I'm still saying, we'll give them the six feet, the teachers, that they want. But, but we will have to cut off. And right now, we're cutting everybody off that, everybody, sixty percent of the, the parents we're cutting off that wanted live. So which, which is more damaging?
It's fifty percent at the high.
Well, okay, fifty percent, but there's ten percent that haven't decided.
Well, a lot of those are gonna be going to the tech school, right? We know that we can't accommodate every single situation. And we may be able to reevaluate as we understand more down the road. Maybe we will be able to bring kids back to five days at the high school. But my personal opinion, again, this is just coming from one board member, is I don't feel comfortable sending all these kids to an overflow area where they're not getting the experience that they deserve. And we're gonna reserve the IEP students that we're gonna allow them to return because they need it the most.
So if, if our county goes to low in October, November, will we reevaluate this plan and possibly bring all the kids back into school? Like, like.
Of course we will.
Requirements will allow us to do.
We have to. We have to keep reevaluating it. And, and on the flip side, if things go awry, then we have to be able to adjust to that. So this is a fluid situation. One thing I haven't said publicly is, I want our parents to understand school is not going to be the same as what we had last year. And we need to give grace to teachers. We need to give grace to administrators. They are trying their best. This is hard stuff. I'm a board member and I've been spending so many hours on this, but it's even harder for them. Logistically, it's a nightmare. So it's not gonna be the same school that we experienced last year. But we're gonna do our best.
So one of the things that John Kern has brought up in the past is how other countries have done things. And Chris, I'm, I, I agree with you. I, I worry mostly about the, the kid, the underserved kids. I, I worry about the kids that, that need the, the education that they're not getting. You know, the kids that have IEPs that are, that are struggling. I don't, and, and I worry about losing a year of education. But, but I also think about the experience of, you know, at the end of the day, do we get an accomplishment because we got the kids back, but the experience stinks? And the education is, may or may not be worse. I mean, I think we, we don't even know, right? So I guess my question is, should we explore starting off with a hybrid virtual model? And see what happens? And, and use that as sort of our litmus test? And kind of expand. Again, I, I, I know I was a proponent of getting kids back to school. I'm also a proponent of the science. I don't, I mean, depending on what you read about respiratory droplets and their spread, you know, a lot of data supports one meter, three feet. But look, the CDC puts their guidance out and we have to kind of, you know, look to it as a reference point. And I'm not an expert in disease transmission by any stretch of the imagination. But I, I, I don't know. I just think that we have to, with these numbers that we saw tonight, which, you know, when parents are asking us why, you know, why we switched, why we had this discussion, why, why we may or may not switch. And we didn't have this information to really base the decision off of. And as we're moving down this pathway, which is not parallel, it's linear. You know, we're finding out more data that was, you know, kind of begged the question, are we, are we going in, are we, are we forcing an issue? And for what reason? And is there a better way? Because if all hell breaks loose and we go back a hundred percent virtual, then Chris, to your point, nobody's getting the benefit. Can we, if we start off smaller, we may be better off. Just my two cents.
Could we reach back out to some of these parents, like I had mentioned earlier, the, and, and students that want to go back full-time and see if they'll change their mind? And, I mean, I find it hard to believe we'll get another ten percent of our kids that want to do that. Eventually, we have to stop asking questions and start moving forward with planning though, Dave. I agree. I would love.
I'm trying to free up some space, Chris. I'm trying to help you, man.
If, if I could have a little bit of the floor to Dave's point, I was gonna say, the, you know, the answers aren't, aren't in this virtual room per se. But Chris, maybe you're right. What if, what if the community responds to this? And we, we say, look, we can only accommodate, you know, eight-hundred and forty-two in the, in the high school. Are people, you know, understanding that, and if we do what Dave says and we re-ask the question, maybe we'll get folks that will show that we can comply. And who knows? But we don't, we can't guess and we can't force. And, and as far as knowing, is it gonna suck being in the overflow room? Who knows? Right? I mean, this, this is different. I, I guess I'm a little, I, I tend to be an optimist. And, and I, I see what the administration, what the teachers can do. And I guess I, I'd, I'd sooner give it a chance than just shoot it, you know, sight unseen. And now we're not even gonna try it because we know it's gonna suck. Well, no, we don't. Nobody knows the future. Nobody knows it's gonna stink. It might be okay. And it's, you know, so I guess that's my only cautionary tale to the board is, you don't, you can't guess what the future is. You can't know that maybe Chris is right and Dave's, Dave's right. If we poll people, we'll get the numbers down to where we need. And if we put people into the, the classrooms, the overflow, well, let's find out if it stinks or not, you know? And, and work, work around it and try to figure it out, try to make it good instead of just shooting down the ideas. Not that we are. Agree with that. I'm not, not shooting anything down. I'm opening it up really to get to talk about it. And more, my question is, I mean, you, you know, you're the one that kind of turned us on to the, the way other countries did it. And that's why I was just kind of referencing that. Yeah, right. The Netherlands did A-B for like four weeks, saw everything was okay and then went full bore. And they, they also started it without, you know, they, they, anyway, yeah, you're right.
That's the point, John. I, I think Keith's making the point that, you know, in a place like the Netherlands, they started smaller. I think you said it was four weeks where they were all A-B. And then they were able to adjust after that. And I think that's what, that's what my takeaway from what Keith was saying. And I, I kind of agree. I think if we start what I would kind of consider sort of in the middle, but smaller than the five-day return, then we can kind of be flexible to go either way. You know, if the numbers, you know, get better and, and we're wrong about this second wave of whatever, then we can start putting, you know, more people back in the building.
Very good chance the numbers could be better September fourteenth now, anyway.
They could be, very well could be. Then, you know, if the numbers go bad like Keith, you know, just. Then, you know, if the numbers go bad like Keith, you know, just mentioned, then we can be flexible and go the other way. But, you know, I would be concerned about going, you know, as much all in to one, one of those extremes, I guess.
I think now with parents knowing how crowded overflow will be and, you know, that space in some classes is about maybe four and a half to five and a half feet. You know, maybe, maybe they won't feel comfortable. Maybe some will decide to go virtual. I, I think, you know.
Parents have, parents, if I could add a, a point of clarification. Parents have been requesting changes. So some parents have said, you know, I signed up for live, but I changed my mind, switched me to virtual. Some said, I signed up for hybrid, but now I want to switch to live. So we've been processing those changes all along. And I have no doubt that the same way students request other kinds of schedule changes or whatever, that where a parent wishes to make a different decision, they'll reach out and, and communicate that. I, I don't think we have enough time to be able to do like a whole other survey and, and go back to the, to the drawing board. So I think that would be really hard. But parents do have the opportunity to change their mind if they're not satisfied with the choice they originally made. And all they do is reach out to their principal and communicate what change they want to make and then, and then we make it.
And, and after tonight, the presentation where they're seeing the data and they're seeing, I, I think, I think you're 100% right. I think we could, we can expect a wave of something to happen tomorrow. I wouldn't be shocked if, if that happens.
Yeah, we should proactively put this information out to say, this is the current, as of, you know, today, the, the plan. So if folks that are, that know their kids are going to one of the elementary schools, they can choose, and, and let them know that you can choose to change your, change your mind and let us know. And then Nancy Anne, you know, you can track the data and we'll see what it looks like.
Well, I'm going to do this. I'm going to put a motion on the table that, that, that we, we start off the school year in a hybrid virtual model. For upwards of four weeks to be discussed further. And and move to that, and that, that's my motion.
For all, for all or just the high school, spare in high school?
I think we started off for all.
Right now, we.
It's the superintendent's recommendation that we will, we have 195 teachers that you saw on the, on the second presentation with, that have the potential of not staying with us because of their own concerns. We have been blessed so far with teacher support, unlike a lot of other districts. If we start off with a virtual model that Mr. McCucci talks about, or the, the hybrid model and a K-12 configuration for the first four weeks, we get a chance to see what is, what's going to happen. We won't have the numbers of teachers that have left the other districts to, on family first care, Zach leave. And, and we'll be able to have our kids in school.
I'm going to second the motion.
Situation.
I, I put the motion on the table.
I'm going to second the motion.
Yeah, and I, I.
And I, I, I'm going to have, I'm going to, I'm going to open a discussion. But one thing I want us to think about is our elementary teachers. These teachers have little kids, little ones, who are adjusting to coming back to elementary school. And they're already, in some cases, said that they're leaving mom and dad. Our kids have been out of school since March. They're not used to wearing masks all day. Teachers are going to be scrambling around the classroom to make sure that the kids are doing the right thing. And I would much prefer a model that would allow teachers and students the time to adjust. It's a short term period. But it would allow them time to adjust to get used to the new normal of schools. So personally, I am not opposed to the idea. What other discussion do we have?
I like the idea.
I also think that it's a good idea. And frankly, some of the numbers I saw from the high school were, were scary. And I think maybe the, you know, using the hybrid model would, you know, help us along to, you know, as everybody has said, get through the first four weeks and then adjust.
I like the idea too, but my question is, is four weeks enough? Should we make it more of a, a natural break in the semester or in the year and go to the first marking period, which is what?
So you think things will be better in November during?
No, I was, I was saying that we could, we, we can reevaluate it. And it, it, we have board meetings every other week, reevaluate the progress. We can monitor the COVID rates. We can see how well they're performing. It gives the teachers a, an opportunity to figure out the, the, the virtual and, and in-class moments. Like, there are so many still unknowns to me. That, that, that I really feel like, and again, I get it. I, I, I was one, I'm, I'm willing to send my kids back to school. I'd be willing to send my kids back to school masked with three feet separation. I wouldn't be, I'm, I'm not opposed to that. And I feel like the science is there. I'm okay with that. But other people aren't and we, we got to go by that way. And I, and I, and I, I can understand that side of it too.
Dr. Damsker, I know not everybody agrees with him. Brian, Dr. Harner, Jen, had mentioned at the board meeting on Monday for.
Damn, you called him out? Well, shit.
No, it's okay.
It's getting late, y'all.
Anyway.
Yeah, we, we. I agree, I don't agree with Dr.
He did mention at the board meeting at Pen Ridge and, and his numbers aren't wrong because he is the one that's counting the numbers for our county. He's the one that's reporting those numbers. Right now is the best time we could start. It's the lowest our cases have been since March. It's, they're lower now than they were when we closed the schools on March 13th.
It's not just about that, though. It's about teachers being able to adjust.
Four weeks, we have two more weeks than any other district. And now every other district is passing their, a lot of them are passing their plans this week or last week. We still have four weeks. We, 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 we have plenty of time. There's, there's no reason to set this delay in. If we set the delay in, it, it's not going to accomplish anything.
I don't think there's a delay, though.
Can we call the vote?
Stop. Great.
All right, all right, all right, let's just vote, let's just vote. I think we've had enough discussion.
Let me make clear what the motion is so I make sure I have it recorded correctly. Mr. McCucci made a motion to start the school year off in a hybrid and virtual model for the first, first four weeks of school. Now, is that K through 12? Is my understanding correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
And who seconded that motion?
Ms. Beal. In the motion though, Anita, I want it, it, it to state that we said four weeks to be reevaluated at each board meeting.
We do have another board meeting August 27th.
We can reevaluate it.
Okay, so the motion would read, motion to start the school year off in a hybrid virtual model for the first four weeks of school for K through 12, which will be reevalu, decision will be reevaluated at each subsequent board meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
And who seconded that?
How about can be evaluated each board meeting rather than should be?
No, it will be.
Okay.
It's mandated to be.
Okay, does this need to be a roll call vote? Or do you want to see what the vote comes out first?
I think it needs to be a roll call vote. But one last thing I want to tell you, I want you to picture everybody, a kindergarten and a first grade teacher and a second grade teacher whose little kids are coming in, who have not worn masks all day. And we're expecting these teachers to scramble around the classroom. We deserve to give them time to adjust. And that's the last thing I'll say. We'll do a roll call.
All right, this is the model that, that you're approving tonight that will give them that time. It was a good, it was a good call.
Thank you.
And it's your recommendation, right, Dr. Harner?
Yes, yes, sir. And I, I fully support the reevaluation on a regular basis because things will change. And they've been doing it every day for us.
They, they do change. And I'd point out that countries that have done this successfully, that are in better shape than we are on COVID, have done this hybrid model. They've started with it.
Hey, are we ready to take the vote?
Let's go.
Mr. McCucci, a yes vote would be voting for the decision to go hybrid virtual for the first four weeks. A no vote would be against that. Mr. McCucci.
Yes.
Mr. Akmanowicz.
Yes.
Ms. Weed.
Yes.
Mr. Reimers.
Yes.
Mr. Spear.
No.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Kern.
No.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Yes.
It pass, the vote passes seven to two. Motion passes, I'm sorry, motion, it's late, motion passes.
So this is pretty significant, significant to us as a community. And I thank everyone for their thoughtful consideration. And that being said, we still have a lot of stuff to get through and it's almost midnight. So I'm almost wondering, what the heck do we have to get through that we have to get through? So let's, let's try to go through this as quickly as we can.
Can we just skip the standing committee reports?
Yes, I was going to say that.
I, I do have to go through a couple of quick things with the facilities. I can skip a lot of it, but there's a, a few things, and one thing we do actually need to.
One minute.
So let me, let me get this clear. We're skipping the policy committee report this evening?
Yes.
Are we skipping the finance committee?
I mean, unless, unless there's opposition.
No, there's no opposition.
We don't have a report, so we're good. Finance is good. And mine, mine, but you could read mine if you feel like it. They're up there for your, you know, education.
All right, Mr. Spear, you have the floor then for your report.
Okay, we've completed the summer capital projects. You can look at them on board docs. And the, the facilities back to school plans are moving forward. We're still waiting on a few things to come in, a few of the hand sanitizing stations that we hope we have an alternative to just put pump stations in the classrooms where we don't get those in time. The Nighting project update is, it, it's still within timeline and well within budget. And we're expected to still have our full contingency of $1.9 million, at least very close to that. There was an issue at the beginning of this week that the administration and construction manager are working through, which hopefully shouldn't have an impact on the timeline. Zach had mentioned, or Dr. Harner had mentioned the tent proposal where we would like to vote tonight on purchasing up to a fixed amount, and I believe it, it may have been $50,000, Zach, for purchasing tents.
Renting.
Or renting, or renting, yeah, whichever way works out better for us. And then we also are supposed to vote tonight on cancelling out the Tohickan Valley lease since we are ready to move into our building. We have essentially vacated the building and Tohickan Valley needs to move forward with their enrollment. And that's it. That's the condensed version. And I believe I can speak for Dave too, that Jeff Swita did the tech school report for us tonight too.
Yeah, absolutely. And I just wanted to point out, we may not need as many tents or like, you know, now that we're going to go one month from the beginning of the year before the winter gets here, hybrid.
We're approving up to $50,000 though, so it gives them that window if they need it. If not, we still have the money later.
I know the initial quote was only for five, so we can get a ballpark on number. But, you know, I was just kind of saying out loud that, you know, it won't be as expensive as we could have been.
Okay, so we're going to move on to, let's try to get this quickly.
Things now?
Which one?
The Tohickan Valley lease and the tent proposal.
No, that's coming, that's coming.
Further down on the agenda.
It's further down. So the first item that we have to vote on is the second reading of the live stream video of school district property. So I'll need a motion on that.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
We're, I'm hearing a lot of pushback from teachers about this whole live streaming issue. I, I guess they, they don't want to be mandated to livestream. So I, I'm still not sure how exactly these.
They aren't, it's my understanding, they aren't.
Yeah, and that's our question. We, we want to know.
Yeah, is there?
Nancy Anne, do you want to tackle that?
Is that okay, Dr. Harner?
Sure, please.
Okay, the, the policy does not mandate anything. All it does is put the conditions in place under which live streaming may be conducted. So what is required is some synchronous opportunities for virtual students. That does not have to be via live streaming. But all teachers will have the technology available to be able to livestream if they choose to deliver instruction in that, using that method.
So we're just approving the technology to, for them to be able to do that if they.
You're approving the policy that puts the rules in place around live streaming when it is used.
Okay.
Any other discussion before? Did we get a motion? We, we did get motions on that, right? Okay, then let's get a vote on that. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed?
I just want to point out that like, we should keep an eye on it, Jenny, in case we need to make any modifications. It's brand new and we're going to need to make adjustments, I'm sure.
To the policy, you mean?
Oh, yeah.
Agreed, understood.
Got it. Motion carries unanimously. Fiscal agenda, we got to approve the Boucher and James list. Going to get a motion?
So moved. I'll second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed?
I abstain.
One abstention, Ron Jackson. Motion carries unanimously, aside from one abstention. The fiscal consent agenda approving July and June bill list, I'll need a motion.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Jackson.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone abstaining? That motion carries unanimously. Facilities.
Who made the motion? I'm sorry, on that one, I missed the person that made the motion.
I think Jackson.
I thought he seconded it.
Yeah, Mr. Akmanowicz, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
And I seconded. Mr. Reimers.
No problem. Facilities consent, we're going to approve a termination of lease with Faith, Faith Christian Academy and contract with the tents to be used for outside. So I'll need a motion on both those items.
Could we separate those?
Are they still going to be necessary? Oh wait, we got to discuss it. I'll motion it. I'll.
You want, Chris, you want to, you want to separate them?
Make a motion to, to separate those?
You can, you're going to need a second.
I'll second.
Okay. So discussion on, I guess, separating them or should we just do it?
Then no objection.
No objection. Okay.
On the table, you got to vote, right? Yeah, well, there's, you can discuss it.
All right, so let's separate, let's separate them. Fine.
Motion's on the table, you haven't voted to separate them yet.
Okay, all those, I guess, all those in favor, say aye if you want to separate them.
Aye.
I oppose, but I don't know that it matters.
I oppose too.
All right, Chris, why do we separate them?
Yeah.
Can we just separate them and vote?
Yes, just his vote. We don't need.
All right, so approval of the, the agreement with, with Faith Christian. So we're going to, to vote on that, right?
Yes, to terminate their lease with Faith Christian.
So what is any discussion we have on that?
Well, Mr. Jackson will make the motion to approve the termination of the lease.
I will, I will second it.
Discussion.
Now we can discuss. My only question is, are we going to be ready to move out in time?
My only question is, are we gonna be ready to move out in time?
Even if we're not ready to move out, I think Tohikam Valley may have a, a legal standing, but I I still don't feel comfortable just giving that option up that we could possibly have. So that's why I am not in favor of terminating their lease right now.
Wait, explain that.
It's our lease.
Explain what?
I I'm just confused on what you just said.
So they want us to terminate the lea, they want us to to end the lease, to basically say the building is theirs and we have no claim to it any longer.
Right.
Where right now, we technically do have claim, even though they're saying we've moved out and we have a definite finish date for our building because we have, you know, registered with PDE with our new address for our school is. There's still a, a slight chance that that could not happen, that there could be delays in construction, that there could be delays in inspections, you know, there could be many reasons that that this wouldn't happen. And I've never been in favor of terminating this lease before we're absolutely sure we're able to move in.
This prevents them from moving in though, this, you're literally preventing them from moving in.
Was it?
It does, because if we ever, if if Chris is right, and some drastic thing happens, and we want that building back, and we have the lease, let's assume they have moved in already. We, we gotta kick them out, they gotta get out so we can have the building back, wouldn't they?
Is the option on the lease a two-way option? Do both parties have to agree, or is the option in our court?
No, I believe the standing is because there's problems with the construction, we have the ability to continue to stay in that building until we get permission to have students inside Nightig, that's like the, the trigger, and since we don't.
The other, the other thing I would say is, yes, I guess it could potentially stop them, I mean, they could still use it, we can conditionally give them permission to use it, but I don't really know, I guess my, my fear is, or my, my statement is, they should have never been using it in the first place. We have a lease that goes until December 31st year. They shouldn't have taken registrations for that building, when we very well could have been using that all the way up until December.
What are we gonna use it for, Chris?
There's still a chance that Nightig may be done, what if the, what if the inspectors don't come into that building until October?
Then they start virtual.
Right.
That could be it, but, but do we, do we need to hand the building over to them?
They've already got.
It's their building, they paid for it.
I know, but here's the thing, they had the, I'm sorry, John, if you want to comment, please do.
I was just gonna say, they have everything packed up, right? There's, there's no reason to go there and then come back like four weeks later. It'd be like, no, we're just, we're done, let, let them, it was always a, I want to say like a gentleman's agreement anyway, that, I'm not sure why it went through December, but, you know, they, they did a good thing by giving us the building back to use. Let's not.
Well, no, that was the contingency on us selling it, we wouldn't have sold it to them.
But even if we do have the building, it doesn't help us because we don't have more teachers. We have to have the space.
Currently with Nightig, I'm, I'm not suggesting that at all. I'm saying if Nightig isn't ready, if something happens with that construction project, that even till November, Nightig could not be ready.
Well, I think, I mean, I wasn't the last facilities meeting, but.
And I have no reason to believe.
Suffice to say, we're, we're all, we're all tracked to get in that building.
I would like to make a motion to vote on this.
Let's vote, yeah.
Here we are, Keith.
Call the question. Do a roll call vote on this from Kayla, it sounds like we have some dispute.
All right, let's do a roll call, Anita, please.
Maggie, just be very clear about what we're saying yes or no for.
Good, good question, Dave.
So, yes is.
Terminate the lease.
Terminating the lease. A vote no is. We are not going to terminate the lease.
Stand with Chris.
Stand with Chris, okay, midnight, okay.
We still have 260 people who are crazy enough to listen to us.
Ms. Weed.
Um, my vote is yes.
To terminate the lease, correct?
Yes, to terminate the lease.
Mr. Reimers.
Yes.
Mr. Spear.
No.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Mr. McCucci.
Uh, yeah.
Mr. Akmanowicz.
Though Chris makes a good point, I'm gonna vote yes and release them from their obligation.
Mrs. Mitchell.
She makes a really good point, but I, we're gonna have to figure that out. If, if, I have faith that as a facilities committee chair, he's gonna get it done.
Finish voting, Keith?
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay, motion passes to terminate the lease.
Thank you.
Seven to one.
Thank you, Anita, all right, next item is gonna be approval of the contract for the tents, so I need a motion on that.
So moved. I'll second.
Do they come with circus acts? Do we need them still? Do we still need them? I, I, I think we need one like right about now, yeah.
I think we should approve it into the budget, give them the money in case they need it, you know? That what you mean by need it, right, you're talking about the tents?
Yeah.
Condition on me?
If, if we go back to a different method later on after the four weeks, and then something happens, we may need those tents down the road, so, I mean, it's not a bad.
They don't have to.
You guys.
They don't have to pick them up for early in September, now they can bump it a month and, you know, get them later for one month instead of three months, and it'll be cheaper, you know? All right, let's vote.
All right, let's vote.
Favor, can someone tell me who made the motion and who seconded it? Because if I'm not looking at the screen, I can't recognize all of your voices initially.
I made the motion, Steve Klein.
Steve Klein made the motion, and who seconded it?
Mr. Chris Spear.
Chris Spear, thank you very much, gentlemen.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed?
Aye, not, or nay.
So we have one.
So it's eight to one.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm still confused over what the goal of the tents is ultimately gonna be, so.
What's the goal for the pavilion outside QE?
All right, can we, can we keep going through this, guys? We're like, yeah, 12 o'clock. Um, sorry, Dave, love you. Human resource consent agenda, let's go through the professional staff, support staff, unit pay, substitute staff, I'll need a motion.
Mr. Jackson makes a motion to approve.
Mr. Kern seconds.
All right, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. Policy and programs consent, we have approval of a contract between the Bucks County Intermediate Unit and the Special Education Services, approval of the Bucks County IU again, another contract between the Martin Luther School and a settlement agreement, as well as a PBIS rewards program, contract between Fairworld Academy and a contract between, I'm not gonna say this right, Mary Kay and QCSC, so I'll need a motion on that.
So moved.
Mr. Reimers.
Okay, discussion. All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. Information items, we have a financial update. I think we, the public can look through these records, I think they're really positive. We also have some, summer school data. We also have any new business from board members.
I got one.
Go ahead.
It's midnight, and Zach, I think.
It better be good, John.
Came up from, from the Q and A, or the, the, the public reading. It had to do with the extended property tax deadline, and it, it has to do with the Senate Bill 1125 that was signed by Governor Wolf and unanimously voted on by the House and the Senate. As Zach said, it came too late. So Betsy Moir and, and, you know, the tax, the tax collectors, I guess, sent everything out. But the idea is, in the bill is to offer, you know, since, you know, these times are, are tough on a lot of families due to COVID-19 and being unemployed and all that kind of thing, the, the proposal would be to extend the 2% discount period and waive the 10% late penalty through June 30th of next year. So that's what, that's what was passed after we submitted our stuff. So I'm not sure the mechanism of how, how I can bring this up to say, I, I think it's a, an olive branch that we should set to our dear taxpayers to give them a, a break for that amount of time, to not, you know, to, to, to extend the discount period and waive the penalty for late, late fees. Just be a motion. If, if I'm allowed to do that, yeah, I would make a motion to, and I can send you the, the text, Anita, but I would make a motion to basically adopt Senate Bill 1125's extension of the 2% discount period and waiving the 10% late penalty through June 30th, 2021.
But I, I would really like to see what the impact of that would be before.
Yeah, that was the only question.
It hasn't been seconded yet, guys, it's not even a motion.
Yeah.
Can I get a second?
No. Who seconded?
Mr. Reimer seconded it, discussion, right?
Yeah, the only, my only concern is, John, a lot, I don't disagree with you, I think that the only question I have is really, what's the financial impact? And, this may be a silly question, but does this really affect our cash on hand? And if so, would this lead us to like have to borrow money?
It's, it's certainly something that Keith's finance committee should look at before we would approve.
Yeah.
And that's why I was gonna say, I was gonna make a motion to table it until the next meeting.
That's fine. We don't want to table it till the next meeting without the finance committee looking at it first.
Oh, I mean, the next meeting after the finance committee.
We wouldn't even have to table it, just bring it back up.
Yeah, whenever it's ready, it will, it'll be put on the agenda whenever it's ready for discussion again.
I'll, I'll send it in an email, Keith, so that you can see what I just said. Yeah, no, it makes, I, 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 I'm following exactly what you're saying. The question I have is really for, for Zach and.
Zach, right.
Uh, and the finance guys is to, is to, you know, what does this look like? Because, you know, if there's a 2% grace period, and then, and then this, this late fee, was that calculated, was that formulated into the budget? And, and more importantly. Revenues, yeah.
Yeah. By the time we get that money, it's too late.
I would like the two weeks to, to work with Lynn and, and have a meeting with our tax collectors to understand what the impact would be of doing something like this in mid-August, when all the tax bills have gone out and people have already started to pay. So I'd like to, to consult with them as well.
I mean, I, I see the benefit in, you know, maybe waiving the penalty due to times, but I, I, I don't. Did, the 2% discount thing, why would we give them?
Because they have less money in their pocket, times are tougher, yeah.
Well, if they pay it early, right? If they pay it before the date, they get a 2% discount. Right?
Yeah, there's an early date, and then you get the discount up until a certain date.
And then after that, you gotta pay a penalty.
Then there's a period where you just pay what your bill is, and then after another period, then, yeah, if you're late, then you pay the penalty.
So what's the first part of this, John?
It says that to extend the 2% discount period and waive the 10% late penalty through June 30th.
Got it, so make the discount period longer, and then after the deadline, do away with the, the excess charges that they would have.
As best as I interpreted, yeah.
Getting rid of the late fee, right?
Yeah, I guess, basically, yeah.
I'm okay with getting rid of the late fee. I just needed to understand that, thank you.
Yeah, so if we get an impact study, so to speak, if that's not too much to ask, Zach, I don't wanna, you guys are already working overtime.
Yeah, I think we did some of that analysis before, but we can, we can take a look at it. The, just quickly, the late fee would actually be more problematic than extending the discount.
Because then people might not pay it until later.
Well, then there's no reason to pay your, your taxes by December, you would have an additional six months, which would be significant, so.
All right, are we voting on this, or what's going on?
You made the motion and you seconded it, so you do kind of have to vote on it at this point.
All right, can we restate what we're voting on, just so everyone's clear?
I guess it, it can be withdrawn if we need more analysis, right?
It can.
Would you like to withdraw?
Do we have a motion to withdraw?
Yeah, I'll draw the motion and, and wait till Zach and the finance committee comes back to, with, with some information for us.
Second.
All right, uh, let's vote on that, I suppose, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, so we're gonna wait on that, it sounds like. So any other new business?
I hate to just sort of ask a question, but I want to welcome back our new members, Mr. Klein and Mr. Jackson. Because you resigned, do we have to reappoint him as a VP?
Technically, yes, technically you have to reappoint me, not only, if, if you choose to reappoint me as a VP, but also to all the committees and positions I held.
In addition, Mr. Anderson was the board member assigned to the education and curriculum meeting, and Mr. Kern was the alternate for the JOC. So now that he's moved in to be a JOC member, we need to choose an alternate, or you need to appoint an alternate for the JOC.
All right, can we, can we do that next meeting?
Okay, I agree.
I make a motion for that.
I'm just being honest, I'm just being honest, guys, like, I am starting to lose my mind.
Well, and you know, some, some of us are working other, like, paying jobs tomorrow, so.
Right, like.
Yeah, I'm serious.
So then, all right, all right, so.
Sorry, guys, I didn't mean to bring it up, I just, if, if Kayla, you get, you get hurt, no one can run the meeting next meeting.
I will put it on the agenda.
It's a possibility.
I will put it on the agenda for the next meeting, that that needs to be decided.
For the second public comment, could we?
No, we're not doing that, sorry.
Could we have the administration possibly answer those questions for us?
All right, so what we're gonna do is, we're gonna put that out there for people to publicly see, but I'm gonna, I'm going to motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
And just someone from the administration, make sure you bring all those questions, copy them over into a document for the board, please, so that we can read it, email it to us.
Roger, sir.
And Keith, you, Keith, you beat me because I was gonna thank everybody for reappointing me and Steve, you know, we appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, everyone.
You guys are nuts.
I know, crazy people.
You had a chance to run, you really did, I don't.
My wife is upset, but you know, what are you gonna do?
Thank you, everybody, have a great night.
Can we have a, can we have a vote?
Vote, vote, anyone, yeah, is there anyone who was opposed?
Thanks for all your work.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, who was a crazy person?
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you all.